Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May thirteenth, meeting of the Aurora Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe.
Here.
Councilmember Marvilia.
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Secress.
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here. Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And will you please join me at the flag salute? Item five is a gender review. Does anyone have any reason to move anything around this evening? Okay, then we'll proceed as published. We have no ordinances tonight, so we don't need to make that motion and no closed session announcements. So that takes us to our special presentations. And item six A is our honorary proclamation of National Foster Care Month 2025. And Amanda Bryley of Slow County Department of Social Services will meet me at the podium. All right. This is an honorary proclamation declaring May twenty twenty-five as National Foster Care Month. Whereas the county of San Luis Obispo is committed to ensuring all children have a safe, stable, and loving home where they cannot, when they cannot remain with their biological families. And whereas more than four hundred twenty thousand children nationwide, including over twenty-eight thousand in California, are currently in the foster care system. Whereas over two hundred children and youth in the county of San Luis Obispo are in foster care. And whereas the Department of Social Services continues to actively recruit more resource families to ensure children have nurturing homes in which they can heal, grow, and thrive. And whereas National Foster Care Month recognizes the critical role of resource families in providing nurturing and stable homes and highlights the ongoing need for more families to support local children. And whereas this month-long effort, which is mirrored across all fifty states and the District of Columbia, celebrate, celebrates resource families and encourages more individuals to positively impact a child's life through foster care. And whereas the Board of Supervisors in the county of San Luis Obispo proclaimed May as National Foster Care Month, now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, Mayor of the City of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim May as National Foster Care Month in the City of Aurora Grande and encourage all residents to join in raising awareness and supporting foster care and resource families in our community. We'd love to have you say a few words. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Bryley, and I'm a social worker with the Department of Social Services Child Welfare Services. I would like to begin by thanking the Aurora Grande City Council for presenting the Department of Social Services with this proclamation. During the month of May, we are incredibly proud to honor all of our county's resource and adoptive families as well as all of the county staff and community partners that support these families. In honor of National Foster Care Month, we have created a video to share with you. Ms. Matson.
Foster care is a critical safety net for any community. When a child's home environment is deemed unsafe, they need a place for the resource family, which could be a relative, a non-related extended family member, or a certified community-based home. These families provide a safe, caring, and stable environment, while the child's biological family works for reanification. Resource families are an essential component of our ability to care for youth in foster care.
We had room in our home and room in our hearts, and we just wanted to help families that were struggling get back on the right path. Love kids. We've worked with kids our whole lives, and this was kind of a natural way to bring that back into our lives. And we had room in our house, and there was just something kind of on our hearts that we've wanted to do for a long time.
Unfortunately, like many counties across the state, we're experiencing a severe shortage of resource families. This means fewer opportunities to match children with families that best meet their specific needs, which can lead to placement disruption and compounding existing trauma.
Last May, the Department of Social Services launched the Seventy-Five Twenty-Pad Initiative with the goal of developing seventy-five new community-based resource family homes by the end of twenty twenty-five. Twenty-five homes for teens, twenty-five homes for school-aged children six to twelve years old, fifteen homes for children ages zero to five, seven emergency foster care homes, and three shelter homes. If successful, this initiative will transform our ability to provide better placement matches for youth in care, support existing resource families, and strengthen our overall foster care system. We encourage interested individuals to attend one of our bimonthly virtual informational meetings to learn more about how they can help. Together, we can reach our goal and provide essential care and stability for our county's most vulnerable children.
The advice I have for anybody considering becoming a resource parent is to just do it. When you get to watch these kids come into care and watch them just heal and flourish while they're in your care, and then to see, you know, some of these happy endings that you get a front row to see. So I would say just do it all and get the information to get started.
As the video shared, we need the entire county's community help in reaching our goal and are hoping this city council will pledge its support by sharing our digital media content and helping us spread the word. Thank you all so much for this honor and for recognizing National Foster Care Month.
Can you give us an idea of what the name of the Instagram handle or whatever that we can find that that we might be able to push that for you?
Yes, it is Slow Foster Care.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, would you like to take a picture? I think we have a request.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, continuing with our special presentations, we have item six B. This is introduction of oath of office for new FCFA fire engineers Stephen Hensley, Jeff Lane, and John Penner. And I'll turn it over to Chief Howlett. Hi, Chief.
Guys, why don't you come over in front of the screen there so council can see your handsome faces. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. It's my honor and privilege tonight to introduce our three recently promoted fire engineers. I want to thank the FCFA staff and the family members that are here tonight to recognize the hard work and dedication of these three individuals for their accomplishments and their commitment to accept these vital roles within our organization. For those that may not know what the engineer role entails, they are the ones responsible for ensuring that the fire apparatus and equipment is ready for emergency response at all times, and they operate, operate or drive the apparatus as part of their assigned crew. These individuals completed rigorous testing process that challenged their skills, knowledge, and ability to ensure that they are well-prepared for this position to serve and protect our communities. This process included a one hundred and thirty-question written exam, vehicle inspection, drive test with the ladder truck, aerial master stream pumping evolution on the ladder truck aerial, excuse me, pumping multiple hose lines from a type-one engine, type-three engine mobile attack, drafting from a static water source, and a progressive hose-lay pumping operation. Lastly, they had an oral interview with a professional panel. This is probably one of the more rigorous testing processes that we do within the fire service. This process was carried out over two days in early February of this year, and I think they would attest that this was a stressful process, but I'm very proud of their achievement. I would like to take a few minutes to introduce each of them and provide some details on their background. First, Stephen Hensley. Engineer Hensley is a graduate of Aurora Grande High School and was a member of the two thousand eleven Aurora Grande High School CIF championship football team. He earned his Eagle Scout in two thousand thirteen and joined the Five Cities Fire Authority in two thousand and sixteen. Stephen graduated from the Hancock Fire Academy and Questa College EMT program. Additionally, he has completed numerous state fire training courses. During my time at FCFA, he has been instrumental in the enhancement of our record management system and reporting, serves on the health and wellness and radio committees, and he also plays a vital role in labor management relations as a member of the Labor Executive Committee. Stephen and his wife reside locally in Aurora Grande. Next is Mr. John Penner. Engineer Penner graduated from Napomo High School and was a graduate also of the Hancock Fire Academy in two thousand and fifteen, earning his EMT license at Questa College. John was hired by the Five Cities Fire Authority in two thousand and sixteen. He earned a bachelor's degree in health and wellness in two thousand and twenty-three and is a Level One CrossFit instructor. His education and training have been instrumental in his leadership of the SFA Health and Wellness Program. John has also obtained many state fire training certificates, which has enabled him to become a member of the Slow County Regional USAR team. He and his wife reside in Grover Beach. And lastly, but not least, Jeff Lane. Engineer Lane began his career in the fire service in two thousand and eight as a reserve firefighter. In two thousand and twelve, he was hired as a firefighter on the SAFER grant, and unfortunately, the SAFER grant positions were not maintained after the federal funding expired. Jeff remained committed to the department, and after five years as a reserve firefighter and driver operator, he was once again hired by FCFA full-time in two thousand and nineteen. Jeff also graduated from the Hancock Fire Academy and completed numerous state fire training courses over the course of his career. Engineer Lane has been active in supporting the Alicia Ann Rouge Burn Foundation events and is the past president of the FCFA Firefighters Association. Jeff and his family reside locally in Napomo. I congratulate all three of you on this career milestone and look forward to seeing your continued success. With that, I would like to introduce Tricia Myers to conduct the oath of office. And once she completes that, we'll have their dedicated person come up for the badge pinning. Thank you.
All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
John, you want to have some, come up and and Joey, are you doing the honors for Jeff? Congratulations again, guys. Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. And next we have City Manager Communications.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Matt Downing, your city manager. I really do enjoy those badge pinning ceremonies. They're a lot of fun from, from my angle, and I'm appreciative of all the family that came and, and supported their loved ones and that. So we do have quite a lot of things happening in our fine city these days, but a couple of real important updates to give you. The first things first, I wanted to give the council and community an update on the first-of-its-kind boil-water notice for the Zone Three Water District. So this is going to be long. Prepare yourselves. So in case the public was unaware, which I've heard some people still were unaware, the city is a contract agency for Zone Three, which essentially means that we pay the county for treated drinking water that we receive from Lopez Lake. And while we also have our own groundwater sources, our primary deliveries are from Lopez Lake. So why was a boiled-water notice, notice issued on April the thirtieth? Well, if you take a look at the city's website, we have a link to a release, information release that was put out by the county on May eighth that the county routinely tests various points along its pipeline from Lopez Lake to the end of the pipeline, which is at Port San Luis. So the pipeline runs all the way from Lopez Lake out to Port San Luis. Several of these routine tests on April twenty-eighth tested positive for total coliform bacteria, while one tested positive for E. coli. Additional samples were taken on April twenty-ninth, so that's the day that we received those, those test results. The county went back out and tested again on the twenty-ninth. And when the results of those were received on April thirtieth, two locations still tested positive for total coliform, but zero were positive for E. coli. Now, these tests take anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four hours to incubate and, and then receive the results from qualified labs. So we did receive that second positive on April the thirtieth. Our wonderful city staff immediately turned off the Lopez water line into our city system. And if you, our city and our wonderful city engineer explained it to me like this. If you think of the Lopez water line like a freeway and all these connections are called turnouts, these are the freeway off-ramps into your local water system. We essentially turned those freeway off-ramps off and said, no, you can't, you can't exit here. And so we immediately turned those off. We switched to pumping groundwater in order to meet our community needs. And at that same time, we also do routine testing of our water sys, water system. And so when we got the second results, we started testing our water system daily. And through that period, I want to make a very important point to the community. We never had a positive test detected in our water system. In fact, to the best of my knowledge, and I won't, I won't speak on behalf of the other agencies, but to the best of my knowledge, none of our agencies ever had a positive internal test into our water systems, which is just odd. However, and so for a while, we thought, oh, we're, we're okay. We don't have a positive test. However, the Department, the State Department of Drinking Water said, no, because it's on the Lopez line, the entire Zone Three system has to be noticed that this is a boil-water situation. So because of all this fast action, we were actually able to lift our boil-water notice on May the second. So that was Friday, May the second, the rest, and we, we monitored the test results from the other agencies the following morning. On Saturday the third, all agencies lifted the boil-water notice on the third. So the state and the county have been investigating what happened to result in these positive tests. But the simple fact is, we simply don't know. And we may, we may never know exactly what caused this particular double positive test. So it's very strange because we've never had a positive test like this on the Lopez line, let alone to have a positive test on the line, but not internally. That's, that's strange. So it could be a random blip in the system. It could have been, could be faulty test kits, could, could be any number of things that led to this weird situation, but unfortunately, we just don't know. So to keep the water safe, the county continues to perform routine testing of the system, looking for leaks, monitoring the system for anomalies like low pressure. Low pressure typically means there's a break in the line somewhere. City staff is pushing to have a joint meeting with the county to discuss what improvements we can learn from in this go-around for if this ever happens in the future. So such as getting information out to our residents and particularly our businesses that were going, how, how do we comply with these regulations? So we are pushing for that. But now, what can residents and businesses do moving forward? The most important thing that everyone can do who's out there listening right now, sign up to receive reverse nine-one-one notifications. So even with all the emergency alerts that were put out, the messages that were put out, the news, news sources that put information out, we still have heard from folks that didn't get the notice. So I, I encourage everyone to go to readyslow.org. Under the section titled Prepare, you can, you can find the various alerts and notifications section and sign up for the reverse nine-one-one. So that, that's an update on that situation, and I encourage everyone to get reverse nine-one-one notifications. Now, that was just the first item for you. Let's talk about the Trafficway Bridge Replacement Project. We did held, we held a groundbreaking earlier this evening for the single-largest capital project in the city's history at almost fourteen million dollars. This is very important, and I want everybody to listen. The Trafficway Bridge will be closed beginning at seven AM on Monday, May nineteenth. Seven AM, Monday, May nineteenth, you will not be able to travel down Trafficway Bridge. This will cause major detours throughout town and congestion in and around the village. We know that. We've, we've mentioned it before. It's going to be painful. We are trying our best to alleviate that pain as much as we can. So this includes, there's a variety of detour maps. If you go to auragrande.org/twbb for Trafficway Bridge, TWB, that's the project webpage. You can go there. You can sign up to get alerts. You can get all the detour maps, all the information. Our city engineer and our engineering team have done a really cool thing where they tell you what we did last week, what we're doing this week, and what we're doing next week. And so they're updating that constantly. You can look at the detour maps. It's going to be a little different. We've talked before about we're going to have two lanes of traffic on Bridge Street heading into Branch Street, so heading into the heart of the village. And because of the temporary traffic signals we're installing, you'll be able to make a left-hand turn at that intersection legally because we're not supposed to make a left-hand turn there now, but we're going to tell you, get to do it for a little while. And then for those who may have traveled by the high school recently, we installed a temporary traffic circle in front of the high school. That's to get vehicles through the area and importantly, get cars from the high school headed westbound in a safe manner. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask our wonderful clerk to put up the video that we have over on the presentation. This video, we've been monitoring this for a while. This is the comparison of before the traffic circle was installed and then a week after the traffic circle was installed. So I'm going to keep talking, but you can watch. You can watch. They're taking about the same time of day as school is getting out in the afternoon. Maybe. Coming from the Trafficway Bridge groundbreaking ceremony, we had a flurry of people plugging in USBs and doing all sorts of things that had files on it. So give us one moment. So while we're pulling that video up, I'm going to go on to the next item on my list for you. So a reminder to the public that the city is still accepting applications through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five for our Measure E twenty-four Citizen Sales Tax Oversight Committee, or C-Stock, the acronym that I promised you I would never use again, and now I use exclusively. So the C-Stock will advise the city council on the implementation and expenditure of the funds that are generated by Measure E twenty-four. And the applications to serve on the committee can be found on the city's website at auragrande.org or by contacting our city clerk's office when we're not grande.org or by contacting our city clerk's office when we're not busy running around and getting videos pulled up. There it is. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and hit play. So as you can see on the screen, on the left-hand side is before the traffic circle was installed. The right-hand side is after the traffic circle is installed. So these are two separate Tuesday afternoons, one on April 15th, one on May the 6th. We've sped it up to 10 times speed, so those cars are not really driving that fast. In the, in the before, what you can see is coming out of the high school, we counted 24 illegal left-hand turns or U-turns, including some that are near misses in that area. Now, after we installed the traffic circle on the right-hand side, you can see 50 illegal left-hand turns or U-turns. This is not a permanent solution. So there is a perception out there, and we're hearing it that, oh, the queuing is, the queuing, the congestion is terrible. What you can see in the video is while there is queuing, cars are stacking up entering into the traffic circle, the congestion leave, the actual congestion leaving the high school is dramatically less. And that's very interesting. So, but it's temporary. We, we know it's temporary. This is not a permanent solution. It's not a formal roundabout. If it were, both of these would require additional land, additional improvements. These improvements were actually $75,000 for the actual bolt-in traffic circle improvements and 180 for all the paving and striping. We were going to do the paving and striping anyway. So that's, I'm telling you that, but that's not really part of the traffic circle installation cost. There's some chatter out there in the social media is that the traffic circle costs $4 million. That's just false. So, and, and it's temporary. It's bolted into the ground. If, as time goes on and as the bridge is actually removed and nobody can drive over that way, if we see something happen that we need to ultimately pull the traffic circle out, we can. But right now, it's doing what we, what we thought it would. And most importantly, because people can actually make that left-hand turn and head westbound toward Halcyon on Fair Oaks, that's keeping cars out of the downtown, out of the detour route and helping with the overall congestion. So we are continuing to work with the Chamber of Commerce during this period of time to establish our buy local program. So please, everybody out there, continue to support our village businesses. Just take a little bit more time, drive a little bit slower and, and be safe and arrive safely. So that's an update on that as well. And because I jumped to my last one already, I'm happy to answer any questions, Council member.
Any questions? I have a couple. When's the stoplight that's at Fair, the Fair Oaks exit going to be live?
Seven, seven o'clock on Monday. It'll be live seven o'clock on Monday.
All right. And I-
Things seven o'clock on Monday.
Everything's going to be ready. So, because I saw people turning the wrong way down Bridge Street today already, even though there's a sign saying, don't do that. And I saw that the mail block, mailbox is gone now over by what used to be Lopez High School. So looking forward to 7:00 AM Monday morning.
7:00 AM Monday morning.
Okay. And my second question is, I want that video. Can you send that off to the council so we can put that out on our socials?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to Item 7, City Council Reports. We do that at the second meeting of the month, so we won't be doing that tonight. That'll be next time. So Item 8 is Community Comments and Suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments brief to 60 seconds or less and address the council as one body. So if you would like to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda, now's your chance. Come on forward.
My name is Gary Borzos. I'm, I, I'm very interested in climate change, and I've looked at the county webs, I mean the city website to look for a climate action plan to see what the city is doing. And what I found is the current, the current climate action plan is dated 2013, and it has goals in it for 2020. So my request is that you update the climate action plan and, and publish it on the website. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Davis. I am a city resident. A few meetings ago, there was discussion about night sky ordinances, and I was expecting a forward regarding information that Mayor Russom had received. I have not seen that forward yet. The other thing, technically it's on the agenda, but it's for a previous item that comment got skipped for. I was going, I would like to know whether there's a chance for a roundabout to be put in if the one by the school winds up being, you know, more popular after people get used to it.
Anyone else on items not on tonight's agenda? And let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
Okay, so Alexandria, it might be on me about the night sky thing. Did I send you my pictures from my trip for to, no, I did not, did I? Okay, so that one's on me. So I will ask for your forgiveness and put that on my list of things that I've already got going here from the other presentations, and I will look over to City Manager to ask him to poke me if I don't get that to you in the next day or so.
Will do.
Thank you, sir. So thank you for bringing that back to our attention, because that really did inspire me as well. So thank you. On the, I'm taking these in backwards order. On the roundabout and possible permanent installation of that, Mr. Downing or Mr. Robison, would you like to answer briefly that question?
Certainly. So we're monitoring the traffic, the temporary traffic circle as it is right now to see how it functions. Anything permanent there, if it is working the way we anticipate, we would look potentially at installing a permanent solution in that location that would require additional right-of-way, working with the high school, working with the farmland across the street to see, can we accommodate something in that area? So we are watching that.
And it's not possible to keep this particular installation permanent?
Correct.
Right. Okay, and with regard to the climate action plan, I'm so glad you asked. So I'm going to let staff take that one too, because that has a happy answer.
Yes, so we are, by the direction of the city council as part of the general plan update, one of the goals is to update the climate action plan as well. That effort, I believe, has already kicked off in doing the preliminary research on all of that. Because yes, that was updated when I worked here previously, and it's been quite some time, so thank you.
Can you remind us when we'll expect to see kind of the big document?
It should be later this calendar year into the beginning of 2026.
Perfect. All right, so there you go. Thank you for bringing that, that up. That's a piece of what the general plan does. All right, so we will close public comment and move on to our consent agenda. This is collectively items numbered 9A through 9E. So first I'll ask the council if anyone has any questions or to any desire to pull anything for separate consideration? No, and I don't have any questions either, so let's go ahead and open up public comment. So if you'd like to speak on items 9A through 9E, so anything starting with nine, now's your chance to come forward. And seeing no one in house, we'll check in online on this one.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment for the consent agenda, bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action.
I'll move approval of 9A to 9E.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russom?
Yes. All right, so that moves us forward into our public hearings. This is Item 10A, the Tourism Business Improvement District Public Hearing to levy the annual assessment and fiscal year 2526 budget. And while staff is doing the roundabout over there, ha, 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 get that? You all know, I've reviewed the standards that apply here to this particular item, and because I have a short-term rental, and this absolutely has a fiscal or material effect on me, I will be stepping down for this item. So I'm going to leave the room and turn it over to Mayor Protem, and I'll return for Item 11A.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think we have a, do we have a presentation by Director Balkin? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of city council. My name is Sheridan Balkin, Director of Recreation Services, and I'm here to present the Arroyo Grande Tourism Business Improvement District, known as AGT bid, public hearing, and provide an overview of the proposed assessment and budget for fiscal year 202526. The purpose of this presentation is fourfold. It is to conduct a public hearing regarding the continuation of the AGT bid, to confirm the annual report prepared by Commune Communication, to levy the annual assessment for fiscal year 2526, and to approve the AGT bid operating budget determining that all are exempt from The AGT bid was established by ordinance in May of 2013 and applies a 2% assessment on all transient lodging stays of less than 30 days, including vacation rentals and home stays. The purpose of the assessment is to fund the promotion of Arroyo Grande as a tourism destination. In 2023, AGT bid bylaws were updated to strengthen oversight by establishing one advisory board appointment per council member. For the upcoming fiscal year, the AGT bid anticipates assessment revenues just shy of $299,000. The proposed budget includes $45,000 to support city's administrative functions. $5,000 are allocated towards Vacation Rental Code compliance, and the budget has a projected year-end fund balance of $132,955, which responsibly and intentionally draws down reserves intended to be invested in programs that drive visitation while supporting a robust marketing program. The budget maintains consistent funding across all categories compared to fiscal year 2425 and provides stability and continuity and marketing efforts without disrupting The proposed budget supports the visitor Arroyo Grande brand, builds on existing momentum, and directly benefits our lodging partners and the broader local economy. It also aligns with Visit California's guidance to lean in during periods of economic uncertainty, ensuring we stay visible and competitive as a travel destination. The strategy for fiscal year 2526 includes maintaining consistent funding to protect key programs, aligning messaging with Visit California, the Central Coast Tourism Council, and Visit Slow Cow, responsibly spending down the fund balance, and ensuring seamless support of tourism marketing initiatives into the next year. In accordance with the Streets and Highways Code, an annual report was submitted by Commune Communication and approved by the AGT bid advisory board on April 28th, 2025. Tonight's public hearing allows lodging businesses to comment or protest. If written protests are received from businesses representing 50% or more of the assessments, the city cannot proceed with a levy. Otherwise, the city may move forward with the assessment if desired. In conclusion, this item ensures continued investment in Arroyo Grande's tourism economy with the goal of driving lodging stays, generating TOT revenue, and supporting local businesses. It is recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing and receive public comment, determine whether a majority protest has been received. If not, adopt a resolution confirming the annual report and levying the assessment. Adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2025 AGT bid budget, and find that these are exempt from CEQA. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Balkin. Do we have questions of council members?
So yeah, I actually have a question for the city attorney here. This has to do, if we were to end this tonight, what would happen to the current fund balance that, that exists?
So if there's a consensus among the council to not levy the fiscal year assessment, then the city would be precluded from levying the assessment, so you would no longer have that fund. So you would have your fund balance that remains, and I would look to staff as what that includes. But it would not, that would not be an action in itself to actually dissolve the T-Bid. It just meant the city wasn't collecting the assessment for the coming fiscal year.
So, so we have money left in the bank at the end of the fiscal year, which is a month away. What would, what, what would happen to that money?
So any money that remained would need to be spent down. And if the levy wasn't, so I'm sorry, Councilmember Guthrie, let me back up. You asked about the dissolution of the T-Bid, or if, if the council wanted to-
If, 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 in fact, we, we, we dissolved the T-Bid tonight, there is a existing fund balance that would unlikely to be spent in the next 14 days or whatever it is. What, 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 how would that money be handled? I'm coming up with the wrong word.
The council can't dissolve the T-Bid tonight. It could provide direction, but the, the process to dissolve a T-Bid under state law requires a notice of intent. So council could provide direction to bring back a notice of intent to dissolve the T-Bid. Then there would be a public hearing, not dissimilar procedurally to the public hearing scheduled for tonight, which is a protest to consider the levy of the assessments. If a T-Bid, if council went through those steps and ultimately determined they no longer wanted to have a Tourism Business Improvement District, at that time that they take action to dissolve the T-Bid, all assessments would have to be returned to the lodging businesses.
So, so even though in practice, the hotels collect this, these funds from their customers, they would, they would be refunded even though their customers actually paid it?
Correct.
Okay, just verifying that I understand that correctly. Thank you.
Marvilia?
Thank you. I just have a question on the usage of the assessments. If we're looking at, we have a fairly, very narrow usage. We, it can be used for marketing, and then I think administration is all that's really in our, and I notice other bids have other ways that they can use that money in terms of community enhancements, public space improvements, local events, that type of thing. If we wanted to expand our usage of assessments, how would that look?
I'm not sure who I'm directing it to. Whoever can answer the question?
Absolutely, councilmember. So there is a process by which, and you're absolutely right, other bids have a wider set of authorized improvements and activities they can fund. The city's municipal code adopted at the time our T-Bid was, was enacted, adopted by ordinance those uses. So we do have a more narrow set of activities and improvements that became, can be funded with T-Bid dollars than is more narrow than what's allowed under the Streets and Highways Code. And so the process to amend those authorized improvements and activities essentially would start with council direction and then would go actually to the advisory body, and then would go through a similar process that we've already discussed relative to tonight's assessment hearing, to dissolution of the T-Bid. It all looks relatively similar under state law. There's essentially a notice about changes, and then we would have a public hearing, and the council could consider changes to the authorized uses. Because our municipal code lays those out and is codified, the city would also need to amend its municipal code, but it could do that concurrently with the process laid out under state law.
So it would be, so tonight, if we wanted to do something like that, we would have to advise the T-Bid Committee to come back to council with recommendations, essentially?
Correct. So on tonight's, what, what the city has noticed for tonight's consideration includes actually levying, levying the annual assessment for the coming fiscal year. So we've noticed that so that the city can hold the protest hearing, because as Director Balkin shared, if the city received 50% plus one protests, it could not levy that assessment. So that's what's under consideration this evening. I would say based on the agenda and how the report is written, the council could also provide direction to staff to initiate or look into instituting the process consistent with our code and Streets and Highways Code in state law. Should there be direction to look at potentially broadening the uses that those- that those assessed dollars going into this fiscal year could be used for.
So we would, that would be our recommendation rather than adopting the budget? Or would be in addition to it?
It could be in addition. Yeah, I think the council has some options when it gets to deliberation, if that's of interest of the body. Yep.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you. Quick question then. You're saying that the council, we could consider looking into expanding, recommending that the city look into expanding uses for T-Bid, but does that have to go, like, how does the budget fit into that? They both have to go together? It seems as though the budget is a timely issue that needs to be handled.
Yeah, I think I would look towards our finance director for the mechanics. She's everything budget related. She's our expert, but so I'll let Ms. Valentine answer.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. For the budget, you would approve it tonight, and then we would use it for the intended uses that are approved until the ordinance was changed.
Thank you. Any further council questions? Thank you, council comments? Or do we do, bear with me? Public comments. Would anyone like to comment on item 10A? Come on up. Thank you. Madam Clerk, well timed.
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you guys all so much for being here and doing what you do. Appreciate it. My annual council meeting attendance. I think it's important to know that the board, I'm sorry, I'm Sean Dazman, and I'm currently the T-Bid Chair, and I'm also the General Manager of the Agrarian Hotel right here in the Village. So I've been on the T-Bid Board for four years, and we've seen some really great things happen in the last year with our new advertising agency and our direction, and so many, so many positive things, I think, that have just launched and are not quite reportable yet. We are looking at expanding that as well as a board. We've been looking at that, and I'm not sure right where we are at that, but that is one of the things we are doing. But it's important to kind of simplify it, I think, and think about that we're taking it. We want a 2% tax that the hotels collecting that gives to the city for the board to give to an advertising agency to advertise the city and bring people back in. And we've always had a great image. That's getting even better now with what we have. As the General Manager for the Agrarian, we're fully in support of the T-Bid. We're fully in support of what the T-Bid does. I know that's a little, you know, I'm wearing both hats at the same time. But I think it's definitely has an effect on our midweek business. I think T-Bid really, and the advertising that they have done for years has really affected and increased our midweek business here, especially in the Village, which translates down to all the, you know, restaurants and gas stations and all that kind of stuff. Also, it's important, one point, that we lean into it during economic uncertainty, and that's what we're doing now, being under contract and having all that. Like I said, we're only six months into this contract, so the numbers are hard to measure right now. But we also have a company now that can quantify so much more and give us results so much better. They've even told me about people that have been in my lobby, that have seen an ad that they've produced, you know, down to that. We have a billboard now that, you know, when people drive by, then they're going to get an ad on their phone. And then when they show up in the Village, that'll be tracked, and when they show up in my hotel, that'll be tracked. We've never been able to do that. So we're getting to so, so many great things have just gotten started with our new agency, and I hope that we don't get the rug pulled out from underneath us while we are an advisory board. I think that's how we would feel as the T-Bid, is like, you know, it would be very unsettling to us, like, you know, why did you let us go? And now, here it is. I'm surprised we're even talking about it in that respect. And I thank the council that did not take it off the table last two meetings ago. You had the opportunity to do that, and you didn't, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers here tonight? And Madam Clerk, do you check on Zoom?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands, and Madam Mayor Protam, I can announce at this time, at the close of the, near close of the public hearing, I have not received any protests.
Thank you. That was one of my questions. So is, not having done this before, Director Balkan, do you keep track of protests, or is it Madam Clerk?
I do. I keep track of that.
So is that, so what is our total protests, if any?
We have received zero.
Okay, Zoom and otherwise?
Correct. No written protests and none during this public hearing right now.
Okay, thank you. So then I think we turn over council comments? Council member Lo?
Thank you. I would just like to say that I do appreciate the T-Bid. I think that's an important element to the whole factor of tourism in the area, and I really appreciate the time and effort that folks put in. Thank you.
Council member Guthrie?
Hoping to go last, but alright, alright.
Council member Marbella?
I would love to, I, in support of, you know, moving forward with the T-Bid as it is at this particular time, I think it would be very strange to dissolve it and be the only city in the area that doesn't have a bid. I think that says something. But I also would be in support of expanding the usage of the assessments into other attractions, ways to beautify our city, to make it more appealing to tourists and residents alike.
Thank you, and I concur with Councilmember Marbella that I'm in favor of the T-Bid. I'm really impressed by the, not that I wasn't impressed with the other firm that we had, but I'm really impressed with the current one now that I've been able to review their reports more and I understand their messaging, et cetera. And it sounds like we're getting actual positive results, which is awesome. And I agree, it also sounds like it would be pulling the rug out from under something that is useful and maybe can be more useful even. And I would support looking at ways to broaden the category of what they can actually spend it on. Thank you. Council member Guthrie?
So as I said last time, I have my doubts, not about the quality of what's taking place, or certainly no doubts about the T-Bid's intentions. I just don't, or ability, I just don't know that we have win enough of a product, but also the kind of cash it really takes to make this work, that is just not funded, that the funding that we are able to generate here is just not enough to move the needle. But as someone pointed out to me, one, so I did, I wouldn't feel that I was pulling the rug out from under, because I actually did say at the last, the last time around, that I wanted to see results if we were going to continue this. And as someone pointed out to me, well, I asked to get results, we got results. You know, we are seeing real-time results of what the advertising is accomplishing, and we are seeing positive growth. Clear, the trend lines all show up. It's also pointed out to me that this is fundamentally different than what we've done in the past. So I'm prepared to also support moving forward. I'm also certainly interested in looking at the possibility of having staff come back, altering the makeup of this. I still have my doubts, because truly, I believe that we'd be better off with 2% TOT spent on economic development in general. Kind of, I'm going to say do this the other way around, promoting the village that builds, that builds Arroyo Grande's name recognition and therefore fills hotel rooms. Back, because we're doing it backwards right now. We are sort of accidentally, it's not the right word, but we are as a byproduct promoting the village, which is our number one tourist amenity. And, but we're restricted because we really have to do that via a hotel, a hotel plan. But as I say, I'm prepared to move forward tonight. But I would also like us to be prepared next year to, if in fact we decided it was better to move forward with the TOT increase, that we would be prepared to end this next year. Because I don't think it would be reasonable for us to have the highest bed tax in the county. That would actually hurt our hotels if we did both the TOT and a T-Bid. I will point out that we do, in fact, even if this bid went away, we do in fact have a bid through the county, percent and a half, which probably, which may literally be more effective than our relatively small amount that we spend here locally. So I would also would want staff to be prepared and to look to the T-Bid, to the possibility of, because I was unaware before this process, in between processes, that in fact, whatever the funds that were left would not be available to be spent on previous T-Bid activity. So I would be looking to spend down that $132,000 so that if next year we did decide to move forward or not move forward with the T-Bid, then in fact, we wouldn't create a pretty awkward situation, frankly, where we are handing money back that was collected from customers that now sits with the hotels. So I would also like to see that recommendation included, that we at least look at spending down the remaining balance by the end of the year. Thank you.
Question, and I'm not sure whether it goes to city manager, but are are T-Bid and an increased TOT actually mutually exclusive? Or can you comment on that?
So they're not mutually exclusive. I think what Councilmember Guthrie is saying is if we did all of the above, we might be the largest TOT and assessment total in the county. And I don't know if Director Balkan has any other information, but they're not mutually exclusive. We don't have to give up one in order to do the other.
And if we, thank you. And if we were looking at increasing the TOT, that's a whole other process.
Yes, it is, it's a tax. So it would be a similar process to what we went through for Measure E24 in terms of public engagement, messaging, and that entire process.
Thank you. So any vote that we're taking tonight doesn't reflect anyone, councilperson's opinion on increasing the TOT?
Correct.
Thank you. Director Balkan, do you have anything to add that would?
No, just that I concur, and we can certainly bring back a revised budget once we go through the process, if we do have support to adjust the boundaries of where the monies can be spent outside of marketing and administration.
Great, thank you very much. So then, am I looking for a motion? I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, so I would like to motion to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025-26 operating budget for the AGT bid and give direction to the T-Bid Board to expand the usage of T-Bid assessments and that this action is exempt from CEQA. Is that, is that an appropriate motion?
Thank you, council member. I think the motion makes sense with the requested direction to look at the boundaries consistent with state law, and it would then go sort of back to the T-Bid Board. And I did just want to make sure I heard, I heard the first item to confirm the annual report and levy the assessment?
I did not say that, but if I need to add that to the motion, I would to accept the report and, what was the second part? Levy the assessment.
Levy the assessment, and then finally, we do have the resolution for the fiscal year budget as well.
I did motion for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
But the addition of the accept the report and levy the assessment.
Thank you. And I'd second.
So let me ask about an amendment here would be that we would also request that staff bring back and a revised budget that includes, that at least includes the potential for spending down the remaining balance.
I would be satisfied with that amendment, yes, with the potential.
And we would need our second to also confirm whether you're comfortable with the amendment of, based on the possibility of expanding T-Bid, to bring a revised budget that considers the potential to spend down the remaining fiscal year budget?
I agree. I mean, it's nothing that we, doesn't mean that we have to approve that.
Correct.
Okay, second. Thank you.
Okay, council member Marbella?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Seacrest?
Yes.
Council member Lo?
Yes.
Council member Guthrie?
Yes.
All right, hi, everyone. We're going to move on to item 11A. This is the Tourism Marketing Services Agreement Extension, and I want to be clear here. So because the other one has a financial effect on me, I'm accused out of that one, but this doesn't. This is just about how we're marketing the city in general and who we're marketing with. So I've reviewed and all the reasonably foreseeable standard and materiality standards under the Political Reform Act, and I am quite sure that I do not have financial conflict of interest on this one. So we will proceed, and I can see staff is doing magical things. So I would sing a song, but then you'd all go running and screaming out of the room. Director Balkan, you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right, staying for round two. Good evening, Sheridan Balkan, Director of Recreation Services. And now I am presenting a recommendation to extend the city's marketing services agreement with Commune Communication on behalf of the Arroyo Grande Tourism Business Improvement District, also known as the AGT bid. The AGT bid was created to promote the lodging members within Arroyo Grande and position the city as a tourist destination, requiring a professional marketing service to compete in a regional and statewide visitor economy. To do this, expertise is needed in digital marketing, strategic planning, and brand development. In addition, the visitor Arroyo Grande website requires maintenance, updates, and routine monitoring to ensure that it stays optimized for speed, security, and current data. Through the city's RFP process, the current agency recommended by the AGT bid board and supported by your council began working for AGT bid on November 1, 2024. In just six months, Commune Communication has demonstrated the capacity, creative expertise, and tools needed to fulfill the AGT bid's mission and has delivered measurable value. Their fully integrated campaigns have produced over 2.7 million impressions and 32,559 clicks with a 1.19% click-through rate, above industry benchmarks. In addition, Commune Communication has established new performance metrics to measure visitation and the effectiveness of their campaigns, demonstrating a decrease in cost per exposed visit by 50%, now at $33 per visit in just six months. Location Visitation Reporting, another visitor measurement tool and a first for AGT bid, allows digital marketing to be directly connected to physical visitation and has generated tracking for 898 exposed visits and more, and 427 unique visitors and counting who were served Arroyo Grande ads and then traveled to our city. Communes' contributions go beyond campaign metrics as they build a marketing infrastructure for Arroyo Grande rooted in data analysis and market research. Their work includes the launch of multi-platform media campaigns across Meta, TikTok, Connected TV, and display streaming ads, the development of multiple creative campaigns, and a full audit and upgrade of visitaroyogrande.org to improve functionality and performance. They've also produced high-quality assets and consistent organic content, including social media posts and long-form narratives to support ongoing visibility and engagement. Additionally, Commune Communication has strengthened our regional positioning by integrating Arroyo Grande into campaigns led by Visit California, the Central Coast Tourism Council, and Visit SlowCal, amplifying our presence in key target markets. In conclusion, the AGT bid board- In conclusion, the A G T bid board has forwarded their recommendation for your consideration to adopt a resolution to extend the city's agreement with Commune Communication for one year in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This action will prevent delays that would set marketing efforts back significantly while ensuring forward momentum and flexibility during next year's budget cycle. Thank you for your time and continued support of tourism and economic development in Arroyo Grande. I welcome any questions that you may have. And also Ryan LaRosa from Commune Communication is here as well.
Thank you very much, Director Balkan. Uh, let's see if we have any questions. Oh, Councilmember Marvelia?
Um, the numbers that we talked about of the confirmed visitors, um, I think it was like eight ninety eight, four ninety four. Is that just hotels? Or is that also can, um, looking at like Airbnbs or like other short-term rentals?
All lodging industry, all lodging, uh, options here.
Okay, the numbers that they're looking at is not, because everything that was laid out in the report was really hotel specific. So I was just hoping, it was like, is, is it even better than what it looks like? Because we're not looking at, you know, the short-term rentals that we have in the area too, which are probably a good amount of business.
And I, I didn't quite understand the answer to that question. We are including the short-term rentals, right? Okay, great, that was it? Okay, Councilmember Lowe? Councilmember Guthrie?
So clarification on that particular number. So when we're looking at eight ninety nine and four twenty seven, those aren't all necessarily hotel visitors. Those are unique visitors, including the village?
Those are visitors to Arroyo Grande who have been served ads.
Who've been served ads, whether they were in the village or at the Agri-Rian?
Correct.
Okay, in fact, the majority, I think, were in the village.
But they are coming to Arroyo Grande and so there's a demonstration of the nexus of having been served an ad and then?
I understand the nexus, I just wanted to clarify because of the, the question about Airbnbs. But okay, just to clarify, I understood it, thank you.
Mayor Protam?
No, thank you.
I have a few questions. Um, that question got my brain working now. In my head, when it said unique visits, um, I was turning that in my head into a night, a, a, a head in bed number. That's not correct? So that just means they, if they came here for lunch, they're in that number?
From this data, that's correct.
Okay. And then I don't know if this number is for you or for our consultant, but I'll ask you first.
Okay.
I don't understand where the cost per visit number comes from. Because when I take two hundred and fifty thousand and I divide it by four hundred and twenty seven, I get five hundred and eighty five dollars. So what numbers are we leaving out of that?
Brian, I will invite you to the podium.
Good evening.
There you go.
Um, I wish that, uh, our media experts were here to answer that question directly, but I can tell you that our cost per visit is the amount of money in advertising that you're spending to get people here, um, versus?
So it's not counting what we're spending on you, it's what you're spending on behalf of us for ads?
That's correct.
So how do we account for what it's costing us in the consultant?
Um, I don't know how to answer that question. I think what we're looking at is the amount of money, as I described, the amount of money that you guys are paying into advertising, on advertising, and what the return of that is. But there's a number that I think was in the report as well to answer your question about, is it a hotel visit or a night rather? And, um, I think it was the, the, uh, I don't have the number directly in front of me, but the California Tourism Report that came out this year that accounts for each of those visits to a city is spending roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when we get our cost per visit down to thirty dollars, we're looking at an R O I roughly at that amount.
I need you to put that into terms for a mayor and not for a marketing person.
Somebody, we're spending thirty dollars to get somebody to get here and they're spending a hundred.
Right, so my question is, how do we marry that number with actual stays?
Uh, well, we're def, I think the closest correlation that we could do to stays is we do have in our reporting specific hotel visits for each of the hotels that are in the T bid.
But how do you connect that with clicks?
We're not as focused on clicks as we are actual visits. So what we're looking at is your ho, your phone is telling us where you are.
Right.
And so we know people going to the Agrarian or going to the Days Inn who have saw, seen our advertising. You can literally see those people clicks and all that stuff, great, we're still monitoring that stuff. But what we're actually focused on are people who are going to the hotels and going to the city boundaries.
Okay, so where do I find the information of who went to the hotels?
Uh, it's in our monthly reporting.
Oh, well, I don't get your monthly reporting, I get, uh, I can't even see that. He's so, he's wearing glasses and I'm not. Okay, well, maybe I missed it in there and, and I need to dig in a little further, but I'm, I'm just having trouble making that leap. Like we've got the one metric that is just people coming here and that's great. We want them here, we want them to shop the village and spend their money, that's great. But we also want them to stay so that they, if they do that, then they're going to be here longer. And that part, that's the piece of this that I'm missing, or at least I didn't get it in the way it was written in the report.
Yeah, we've got in the, in the, so far we've done monthly reporting, we've done our six-month reporting. And in each of those has included breakdowns by specific hotels. Um, we could try to make that clearer. I will say, and I don't think it's too big of an assumption, we're assuming if you're going to the hotel, you're staying. Uh, so I will.
Um, maybe, maybe you could follow up with the council directly because we don't see the, the nitty-gritty data that the T bid sees. So you're probably providing a much higher level or to them than you are to us. So, um, I'd love a follow-up if you could do that.
Happy to do that.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, okay, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Can you put up, uh, can you put up page one sixty eight of the agenda?
Is this for me or should I?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at staff. Yeah, so that lists the hotels.
We can do that if you give us some minutes. Okay.
So that actually lists the hotels.
I was trying to connect that with the dollar amount and that's what I couldn't do.
Oh, okay. In, in fact, I actually do have, have a question. The two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand is both the consultant fee and includes, it's a not to exceed. So it includes the advertising as well, it's not just pure, okay.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward on this item?
Hello, Alexandria Davis, uh, Arroyo Grande resident again. I'll start with a short anecdote, I promise it's relevant. Uh, earlier this year, I went to Vegas to go see a major attraction. Now, going to Vegas meant doing a whole bunch of things like, you know, flight and hotel booking and whatnot. What becomes relevant is after making the decision to go to Vegas and starting to take action based on that decision, we started getting advertisements for Vegas. Now, the question here is, how can we tell the difference between someone who wanted to go to Arroyo Grande? So they got ads and someone who got ads, so they went to Arroyo Grande?
Anyone else?
Hello, I found a way to get my six minutes. Three each. Um, Sean Dasman, I am the current Chair of the T bid and the General Manager of the Agrarian Hotel. Um, I think it's important to note, uh, that this is the first time in four years that the community has been on the same page as the T bid board. And our public comment at T bid meetings is a hundred percent on board with what we are doing. We've always seemed to have a little, you know, a bit of difference of opinion there in the past and that's all moving forward. Um, in a positive direction, that's, and that's exciting for us on the T bid. We are excited about, uh, Commune, uh, as the T bid board. We loved our last advertising agency. Uh, we just, we also love the fresh ideas that the new agency has and what they've brought to the table so far and their plan for the future. Even though they've been with us for six months, a lot of these things didn't take off right away. So the reporting is very downed. The reporting, the numbers are, are going to climb, I would hope dramatically, uh, you know, in the next year. When we look at this, I, I think we're going to see some, a lot of differences. And, and just the fact that of how much we can quantify things and how much we can track things is so exciting for us uh, as a T bid board and hopefully it is for you guys too, because we're, we're very excited about that. One of the newest ideas that, that Commune has is to, uh, is to advertise subtly, uh, hotel specials for all of the hotels in our community. This is something that's not going to cost our hotels anything. They're going to be printing, uh, different items, uh, if it's a coaster, if it's a, a table tent, if it's different things about a special at the Agrarian, uh, that's having, that might be on the table or surrounding the coffee cup at Andreni's when you get your cup, cup of coffee. I mean, that, that's just the innovative thinking that they have that is, that is going to, is continually fresh, new thinking, out of the box thinking, uh, that we have here, you know, this time. And so, you know, in a nutshell, um, the, the T bid board, I don't want to speak for everybody, but, uh, we're in, we're in unison and consensus when we say we're excited and hope that we're able to continue with Commune. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Sean, don't, don't get too comfortable in your seat. Um, let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so a close public comment and Councilmember Guthrie has a question for you, probably as a function of you being part of the T bid. So if you would, because people at home want to be able to hear you, uh, come on back up and I have no idea what he's going to say.
Um, so, so actually what prompts my question here was your example of the, the innovative thinking that, that in fact, the, the, the village restaurants and all, whatever restaurants can advertise for the hotels. Is there, is there any reciprocity? Is there any advertising in or by the hotels specifically for the village that's created by the T bid? And I'm one also going to ask, your hotel, I assume, is participating. What is the participation from the other hotels? Do you have any sense of that?
Again, that's just launched, it, it's, it's still in creation. I haven't even given them my information yet for what's going to be my content yet. So that was just like literally launched last week, so, um, that, that's coming. And I, I don't know why, I feel they've, they've, I feel like they're emailing every, all the hoteliers, all the general managers, whatever, asking what their special might be that they would like the, uh, the T bid to promote and put it on a coaster, put it on, you know, a different, a couple of different items that they have and get it out in the community so that people stumble upon it and think about, hmm, I could stay here midweek for a discount. I could, you know, do, you know, whatever their, their special is at that hotel. Um, the T bid is not, that I'm aware of, uh, doing that, you know, back to them, uh, you know, to the community through the T bid. We, we are doing it at the Agrarian for sure. Uh, we promote the heck out of, of everybody and we give out, you know, dozens and dozens of recommendations every day and have, you know, uh, Q R codes with discounts and, you know, uh, to restaurants, not only in the village, but the city and the five cities and beyond. So, uh, we do a lot of that on our own already and I think a lot of other hotels do that as well.
Sure.
All right, we do have a question and I have a question too, uh, based on that. I, and, and so this is probably going to be for you, so come on up. Um, so let's piggyback that one. So there was a lot of talk of hoteliers, but then we had Councilmember Marvelia bring up that those aren't the only people who are paying T O T. So are all of the purveyors of, of, all, all the people who are, are paying into the T O T, um, being contacted and offered the opportunity to participate?
Sorry, to clarify, you're talking like Airbnbs and the like. So we have just started this outreach and one of the things we've done with Sheridan and her team is try to create a workflow that makes it very easy to outreach to different hotels and other folks that are, uh, paying into T O T. That's just started, started with hotels. Um, Sean was correct and maybe you guys can help here. We have had a difficult time getting responses back in terms of what deals they want to promote. And I should say also, it's not just some of the physical items that, that Sean mentioned, coasters, table tents. Some of that stuff is sort of fun, innovative stuff that can sit around. But we're also, um, customizing our digital advertising to be able to, uh, get out and, and promote, uh, specific deals too. Our next idea is to go after, you know, everybody who wants to. I don't think it would be a responsible use of funds for us to spend all of our time trying to reach, uh, these guys constantly. I think at some point, that's why we want to kind of build the workflow and the communication flow to give people a chance to give us the deals that they want to promote. And I would say, yeah, that that would, uh, uh, spread beyond hotels.
All right, thank you. And the other one was, um, I'm going to put, yeah, it was for you.
Okay.
Um, I think it's for you, from Alexandria. I'm going to, I'm going to summarize her question, it's a chicken and egg question. So she was, she decided to go to Las Vegas, started researching, began receiving ads. Or how do you know it's not that rather than you served an ad and now they decided to come here?
I will say, uh, I'm, I'm going to again do the non-scient, I learned my lesson. I'm going to do sort of the non-scientific answer to this question, which is a really good one. The hope is that we would, uh, hit people in both ways. I think the first way, uh, you got re, what's called retargeted, which means when you start to visit something, I'm going to use the global they, recognize it, start to feed you ads. You go by our Arroyo Grande billboard right now, right? You're retargeted. You're then given a digital ad in response to that, same kind of principle. Um, but the other way is, and that's why we've, we've done a lot of research. The first couple of months, we really spent trying to figure out where our growth markets were and our nurture markets were, we called. In other words, who's most likely to come here? And then to go, they don't know about us or they don't know nearly enough about us. So we have kind of a dual-pronged strategy. We are retargeting to people who are researching us, but we're also reaching out into markets that we know will have a high yield for those who need to come here so we can increase awareness.
Can you digital, can you, can you definitively tell the difference?
Yes.
Um, okay, well, maybe that stuff you can present to us later.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, so, um, let's bring this back around to the council for comment and or action. So let's start with Councilmember Guthrie, do you have comments?
So as I know, I, I don't have any trouble with, uh, with, with the contractor that I've always, I thought this was one of the better programs. My issue really has to do with, 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 in fact, I've, I've looked at some of your work with some downtown associations and I, I think, uh, that, that might actually be a more effective, uh, avenue for us. But I don't have any trouble with the contract. I do understand, uh, I'm an operations person from a hotel, so you know, uh, marketing is a necessary part of our efforts, but, uh, but, but it is necessary. And I, and I recognize that you, you're never going to get it targeted down to the exact, the, the exact person who was advertised shows up at your, shows up your, unless they walk in with the ad and it's a special, it's a special program. But I, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with the contract.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe?
I just want to say, um, how much I appreciate the staff, the consultants, the, the, uh, T bid members. Uh, I feel like I've learned a lot just by, um, being, uh, listening to all of the items here. And, uh, I appreciate this as being very, um, homegrown based. And then the creativity layered on top of that. And I think it provides a unique forum and format for, um, expanding our, um, our reaching out and especially now with the technology. So it's great to have the consultants who are dialed in with these new opportunities. So I'm just, um, super impressed and I just want to say thank you very much. I'm in support.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Um, I'm in agreement. I appreciate what Commune is doing as someone who's been in marketing for twenty years now. I, I understand this. I I understand this very thoroughly, and I I love the reports. I love the numbers and showing that things are improving. Six months is a miniscule amount of time, so I'm really looking forward to seeing what the next year brings for us.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I have similar feelings. I think Commune's done a great job, and I it took me a while to get part of what I don't have experience in these fields, but I certainly am looking at, you know, how is the consumer being marketed? Like, how is it being marketed to them? And I think it's great, and obviously the results are very good. So I'm in favor of proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know I'm grilling you every time, but that's part of my job, right? I will say that the imagery that was in the report was really outstanding, very different, very new, very fresh. I really like that. I I'm trying to communicate to you the the kinds of metrics that I'd like to see that make sense to me as someone who's in charge of taxpayer money, not in charge of marketing. So that's that's where that comes from. So I I hope that maybe next time around, we can we can have a little bit more that it gets a little more global in how it looks. I have a concern, and my and and Mr. Jasmine, you know, I love you, and I love the Agrarian, and it's a it's a foundational piece of our village. But we have 150 ish people who pay into this T O T, and I want to make sure it's not just benefiting the big ones. Everybody's paying in, so everybody gets a chance. And I realize that, you know, that I know we've got the big four hotels, and we've got, you know, that's where the big numbers are. But when you've got, when you get down to all those little people who are doing the right thing, they need to be contacted, and they need to have a chance to benefit from this as well. So I have a concern there. It doesn't have anything to do with whether or not I'm going to agree to bring you on for another year, but I'm expressing that concern to you. I'm expressing that concern to Sheridan because I I don't, I what I'm hearing, I'm concerned that I'm hearing some unfairness here, that there's it's not being. It might be being favorably applied. No, not intentionally, of course. So Mr. Jasmine into the Agrarian, I'm not I'm not trying to throw a barb or anything. I just want to make sure everybody who's paying into it gets a piece of it, or at least the opportunity. And the best you can get is an email back saying, sorry, I'm not interested. Great, but everybody gets a chance. I have a concern about, I really want to know what we're getting for 250,000, not what we're getting for a piece of 250,000. So I realize that's not the way you guys think about it, but from a taxpayer standpoint, that's the way I think about it. Because if the council is going to decide to spend that money in a different way, as they discussed in a previous thing that I don't participate in, then we have to look at the entirety of how that money is spent and what that's benefiting. So that's the metrics that I'd like to see to help out with that. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to move adoption of the resolution authorizing the city manager to extend the agreement between the city and Commune communication in the amount of 250,000 for a Royal Grande Tourism Business Improvement District Marketing Services for one year and find that the executing the contract is not a project subject to CEQA.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we have any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, can we get oral call, please?
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes.
All right, moving along to item 11B. This is the operational and organizational assessment, and I will turn it over to Mr. Downing. Are you ready, Mr. Downing?
Will give us one moment. We are getting ready to pull all of that up. So I am going to turn this over to our Human Resources Officer, Ashley Garcia, once they get, once they get set up. We also have our consultants here this evening to talk to you about the organizational assessment as well. But I'll give you a broad overview. So we entered into this effort toward the end of last year. The city put out an RFP requesting professional firms come in and do an organizational assessment, partly in response to the council's continued goal of economic development. And what does that look like for us? And how, if we are to accomplish that in house, how does that actually work? How do we, how do we accomplish that, given all the other things that we do, things that we're required to do, expectations that the council and the community have of of the organization? And so that is the effort that we went through, and this is the result of that. So I'll turn it over to our Human Resources Officer, Ashley Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I would like to introduce our consultant team from Raftellus, Emily Ellington and Rebecca Hoskin, who will walk through their recommendations this evening.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. First, we'd like to thank City Manager Downing and the staff of Arroyo Grande for being great partners in this project. We enjoyed working with staff and getting to learn more about the organization and more about the city. Rebecca and I both come from the local government world and former finance and budget directors, and so we like to think of ourselves as public servants, one step removed. And it was great to to reimmerse with the staff at Arroyo Grande. And it's clear that they are dedicated to this community, and they work diligently, and they work hard in that service delivery. And so it's been a great experience, and we thank you for the opportunity to to do this study. We're just going to hit the highlights of the overall project. You all have the full report, so we'll welcome kind of your questions and discussion once we get through the presentation. But did want to hit some of the highlights. As as the city manager mentioned, the project itself was was sort of rooted in kind of long term financial sustainability, economic development and revenue growth over the long run to kind of meet the growing service level expectations and and needs of the community. And typically, when we do this type of work, we're going to start with the overall organizational structure and staffing. We want to understand what are your strategic priorities? Where do you need capacity for those priorities? As well as what are the service level expectations? And sometimes those are required by federal, state, or local laws. Sometimes it's just past practice. It's something that the community has received consistently over the years, and staff continue to work to to develop or to provide the services at that level. And we're going to keep our eye towards opportunities for operational efficiency. Where can you leverage technology? Where can you improve processes that will help you deliver the services as effectively as you can? All right, so just to kind of level set a little bit around the kind of the scope of work that that we did. The departments on the left side of the slide here are the ones that were included in the operational and organizational assessment. The the work that we did excluded the Police Department, as well as the Five City Fire Authority and Public Works Operations, which is really about two thirds of of the overall staffing. But we covered all the other functional areas, and I think these functional areas are really important because there's a lot of cross pollinating that happens among these departments. And with a city of your size, you know, these departments have to actively and purposely work well together in order to kind of deliver the services and meet expectations for all the various constituencies. So when we do these assessments, like I mentioned before, we start, we're kind of rooted in organizational context. So our team came out in January and talked with almost every staff member within the scope of departments that that we were part of the study. And we just talked to them about what we kind of call the the Rs. But, you know, what are your, what are your responsibilities? What are your requirements? What do you have to do? What resources do you have to get those things done? So we learned a little bit about the workload drivers and sort of understood the service level expectations that they're operating under currently. You know, how how do you know you're doing a good job? What is the expectation? Is that been a practice? Is it a legal requirement, et cetera? And then we also know that that you all did some work at the early part of the year in February around your council goals. And it's important, as the iceberg shows here, to understand what those visionary kind of strategic areas are for the city. And our job is to kind of understand how those two worlds collide, how the workload drivers and kind of day to day service level expectations intermingle with the long term strategy of the city and ensuring that there's adequate capacity to kind of take on both pieces of that. And so with that, we kind of came up with four focus areas that are pretty closely aligned, I think, to the goals that you've set in in 2025. Again, the economic development vitality, how do you just ensure kind of the long term sustainability, the strong revenue tax base that's going to support service delivery over the long run? Where are opportunities to make sure you're organizationally as effective as you can? You know, where do you lean on technology? Where do you lean on staff? And do you have that in balance? We know that measure E 24 was was a big measure for the city, the pavement improvement plan. Infrastructure is a huge priority for you all, and so understanding kind of your capital planning and capacity around capital delivery in in the out years. And then overall, just ensuring kind of the quality of life that this community has had for for many years, continuing on into the future. With that, I'll let Rebecca talk through some observations.
So before we launch into the detail of our recommendations, I always like to share kind of the overall overarching observations we had and we entered your city in in our first thoughts. And, you know, our our scope is always to look for the things that can be improved. We understand that. But we also always want to respect and acknowledge the things that are going well and that the city does have strengths. And so one of your strengths is definitely a high level of customer service, very personalized, lots of very friendly faces in city hall. We appreciate that. Staff also, we felt had a sense of stability after some turnover in city manager role, and there seems to be a settling amongst staff into a comfort level. It's a good, positive thing. We see that there was succession planning in several of your higher level positions that's already been in process. There's a few gaps, and we'll talk about that in our recommendations, but generally, that's a good thing, too. And finally, a recent investment in technology you guys are pushing forward in the modernization and automation of some of your old manual processes, and we'll talk about that a little more. But that's a really good thing, and you're kind of starting that process. And, you know, we'll we'll talk about some recommendations to continue that. On the flip side, there are some opportunities for improvement. And one thing that struck us right away was the city manager span of control. You know, typically, there's a moderate level of span of control of direct reports and operational oversight. And here, that seemed to be a little broader and larger, which left little time for some of the other strategic goals. So we'll talk about that a little more in our recommendations. The other piece was, again, we want to support that economic development goal that you had set. And so we want to make sure that there's resources in alignment there when we look at your structure and your staffing. We want to continue that modernization process with departments and really, you know, automation is the first step and really driving toward a data driven analysis and analytical process and decision making to move things really forward. And finally, adjusting and enhancing administrative support. We wanted to make sure that the senior level positions, their capacity is fully being used at that higher level. And we we see some recommendations there related to admin support for the city. On the next slide, looking at that a little bit, we call this our spaghetti diagram for obvious reasons. And what we did was we kind of charted out who's responsible for what, for some of this administrative support. You know, staffing's tight, we understand that, and, you know, a lot of your admin positions right now are part time positions. And the result of that is a lot of people are doing a lot of things and wearing a lot of hats. And what that does is sort of takes away focus on their core duties, and so it's it's inefficient in our view. So that's one thing we we will have some recommendations about administrative support. When we compared Arroyo Grande to some of your peers and benchmarks, you have the highest ratio of city staff to administrative support staff. So we feel that that's one area where we'll and we'll share some recommendations in that regard. And now I'll turn it back to Emily for some of our recommendations.
All right, we're doing like a tango here, but you don't want to hear from us one person the whole time, so. As we get into recommendations, first want to talk just a little bit about kind of how we approached recommendations overall. I think it's really important to note that in the work we do for local government consulting, we have the benefit and the pleasure of seeing how local governments are operating across the country. And I think when it kind of hats off to the council and to staff for recognizing that an assessment is just an opportunity for for kind of a fresh perspective. And, you know, how are we doing and where could we do, where could we do better? And and the recommendations that we provide kind of really lean on our experience in in this space, in this industry. We we work exclusively with local governments. They lean a little bit on our experience when we were in local government and in our own professional, as well as, you know, industry best practices and and data data analysis. And so all of those pieces kind of culminate into the recommendations that that you saw in the report. It's also important to note that, you know, how you go about those recommendations is really up to this body and to the staff. What we try to do is take a longer view. We wanted to look at what are your current service level expectations and workload demands? And what do we see that going to in the future? And offer recommendations that adequately resource you for that future state, recognizing that you couldn't afford to do all of them tomorrow. And so in the staff report that that you've been provided, you can see kind of, you know, staff's recommendations around the phasing, and many of them are fiscally neutral, which is good. And, you know, we offer kind of our thoughts as well. But that implementation, that prioritization, that's really up to you all in terms of how you take the recommendations and move forward. But we we certainly like to offer kind of our view from from the work that we do across the country. And so with that, in the report, as you may have noticed, the flow of of the recommendations starts, you know, kind of funnel, big picture, citywide, moves through each of the departments that were part of the study. We look first at the organizational structure, just how are they functionally aligned? What are the services being provided? Does that alignment make sense? Is there some restructuring that might help for for better service delivery? Then we're going to look at resourcing and capacity. Are you meeting service level expectations? What are your workload drivers? You know, do you need additional resources to be able to meet that into the future and currently? And then lastly, we'll look at opportunities to augment technology or do the process a little bit differently that might actually lead to, you know, newfound capacity to use in some of the other spaces that that staff may need them. And so we'll start with economic development. I think you all are on a really great path, so you're wealth in the middle of your general plan update, and part of that is economic development driven, and you'll have future market studies. So kind of the strategic aspect of this is underway, and we certainly encourage continuation of that. It's really important to have that vision, the strategy, the community alignment of, you know, who do we, who do we want to be? What's our identity? And how do we grow that tax base to meet the community's identity? And so continuing that is really important. We also felt that it was important to kind of enhance the visibility by actually creating an economic development program that's that's fairly broad, that is inclusive of T bid, as has been talked about some tonight, but other aspects of economic development as well. And to create a program requires some resourcing. And so we also recommend kind of a boots on the ground position is how I characterize it. The one who's creating those relationships on a day to day basis with your business community and with other regional partners that's focused on attraction, retention, what's our overall strategy, basically executing what comes out of the general plan update and kind of the market strategy for the city. Citywide, as we looked at particularly structure and staffing, you know, this is is probably the weightiest of the recommendations, we'll acknowledge that. And that is to add an assistant city manager. It is not uncommon in your region and among your peers. And a lot of it is driven around kind of that iceberg picture that we had earlier. As as positioned currently, the tip of the iceberg is pretty small in the city manager's kind of three legged stool between oversight of of the day to day administration, you know, moving forward council goals and priorities and kind of maintaining those strategic relationships within the community. And so we feel that the assistant city manager position kind of right sizes that, that it allows for some functional alignment in terms of the nature of the departments and the type of work that they're doing, splits that oversight responsibility and offers a little bit more capacity and weight in kind of the council goal setting process, strategic priorities, community relationships. And so the chart here kind of shows how we would recommend portfolio structures for oversight, not necessarily indicating who is responsible for what portfolios, although we would recommend the city manager maintain public safety oversight, that's that's pretty common. But within internal services and operations, it's sort of grouping the departments that are functionally closely aligned. And certainly within economic development, public works, community development, and recreation services are all a critical part. recreation services are all a critical part of any of that strategy or any execution of that strategy. On the community development front, kind of a similar recommendation to the citywide, we recommend kind of formalizing the planning manager position as a supervisory role. Again, reduces span of control, gives the director some strategic capacity beyond day-to-day oversight. There's an opportunity here to shore up some of the administrative. I know there's a lot of process improvement in place within the department based on some of the workload data we were given. There's still a fair amount of admin support happening within the planning positions, so this may just kind of right-size that capacity and allow the planners in the planning positions to focus on their core duties. And then, you know, some opportunities to collect a little bit more revenue by grabbing the plan fee up top or the plan review fees first, you know, so if it falls out later in the process, you still had that opportunity, and maybe just some efficiency in reducing the redundancy currently with two kind of software programs being used for plan review.
Moving to the city manager's office, aside from the ones we've already discussed, we would recommend adding one full-time executive secretary with the concept that this position would kind of do dual duty of front reception for City Hall as well as supporting the city manager's office in terms of administrative needs. We really feel that's beneficial right now. The front desk duties are sort of split amongst a bunch of operational staff, and that's reducing their capacity to focus on core duties again. And we also think it would improve your customer service by having a central person who understands the folks walking in the door and all of their needs and is able to deal with that. So that's one recommendation. Another one is to increase the current, you've currently got a part-time executive secretary in HR, which was a wonderful addition. It's actually improved the ability for the division to work, in particular for the HR officer, but it's still not sufficient, and they've been utilizing the management analyst in the city manager's office to fulfill all of the needs. And so we would recommend making that position full-time so that the management analyst, again, can focus more on the policy work that they should be supporting and budget Into Legislative and Information Services Department, we didn't make any proposed changes to the structure here. We felt that, you know, they're doing pretty well with the team they have, and, you know, that we're, the hope is that with some of those other administrative positions we just talked about, that would free up some capacity there. They also are doing some of that spaghetti chart work for, you know, some of the general administrative work. So if we were to add some administrative resources, that gives them a little extra capacity back. They provide a lot of guidance, and we think that for, they're doing the communications piece right now in terms of postings on the social media and such. The assistant city manager, that would be another role for the assistant city managers to provide the strategic guidance to the communications program for the city toward this department. And finally, we would ask, you know, suggest that we come up with a plan to automate the public records request process. That is one of the few processes that's completely manual at this point. The department's seeing, you're seeing quite a few more. You've had a 50% increase in public records requests in the past five years. And so we're suggesting that you invest in automation of that process to just to help tracking and saving time. That is a state requirement to respond within the 10 days, so it's important to track appropriately. And finally, administrative services. Again, we would suggest that we remove those front desk admin supports from the finance staff so that they can focus on finance. We did not recommend an additional staff for finance right away. We do have adding a fourth senior accounting clerk going forward because we do feel that your finance operation is growing. We're hoping that if the administrative support were to give back a little capacity right away, that could be put off for a little bit of time, but you're adding measures. The state reporting is getting more complex. We're seeing this across the board for all the cities, and so we think that we need to plan ahead a little bit and have a plan to add some finance capacity moving forward. You do consult for some of that, some support now, and so there may be an opportunity to offset some of that cost by taking that in-house and/or perhaps you can contract the whole thing, but we think you need more additional capacity. And also, we think you would benefit from additional IT. Similarly, they're a little more urgent than finance, I would say, because it's part of that modernization issue. You're starting to de-modernize a lot of things, and the two positions in IT right now are doing a great deal of work for the city, and, but there's more need. The departments reported it to us that they have more needs, and the IT staff report that they're, you know, struggling to keep up and not getting to everything, frankly. So we think, again, that's another area that would benefit from additional staff. Again, doesn't have to be immediate, but we think that it would be good to move in that direction, and it would also help with efficiency overall to automate, but also to move you to that data-driven kind of analytical management process.
I'll take that to you. All right, we're in the home stretch, I promise. All right, so we'll round out with Public Works and Recreation Services. Just a quick scope reminder here, you know, within Public Works, we stuck to kind of administration, so we did talk with each of the divisional leads, and then we talked with the engineering and design group as kind of the part of, part of the study. Overall, I think this is an area where succession planning, the city's doing a good job, and they sort of recognize the need here. There's a little bit of a formality in a recommendation so that the operations folks sort of know who's in charge if the director's not there, and so there's that recommendation. And there is clearly kind of infrastructure need and growth, and there's visibility and transparency desired by your community, particularly with E24 and your pavement plan. So I think making sure your engineering resources are sort of aligned and structured for the long run, there's some opportunity to do that in sort of a neutral, neutral way that builds some career pathways. Engineers are hard to find, and so if you can, you know, bring one into the city and embed it in a really good culture, you know, hopefully they have that growth opportunity moving forward, and, you know, your position to be able to deliver on kind of the capital needs that your residents are seeking. And the last one's a big one. We deal a lot with this in what we do, but when we look at the modernization lens, I think that the city has appropriately started kind of in kind of a financial backbone, right? So BUNIS is a major upgrade. There's a lot of opportunity for electronic workflows, you know, payrolls on the horizon, utility billings on the horizon. The next big rock in terms of modernization comes in asset management, which is a lot. And, you know, we see that as first sort of inventorying and understanding what assets you have, going through the process of having that available, and then moving towards kind of an asset management system that, at the end of the day, helps you decide, you know, where to best place your capital dollars kind of in a risk-based manner so that you're getting the highest and best use for the longest time you can for the assets that you're replacing. And that, you know, that doesn't happen tomorrow. That's a, that's a long term, but hopefully in the report we've laid out, some of those early steps to kind of move towards that program and help inform your capital decision-making in the future. And then lastly, with Recreation Services, no major structural changes. Here, there's a lot of conversation tonight about T-Bid. We essentially viewed that as sort of one of the core services within a broader economic development program and strategy. So we think it would make sense to sort of align the resources and kind of the functions and activities within T-Bid to a broader economic development strategy, whatever that looks like for the city, and would lean on the general plan and that update process to kind of guide what that looks like. The city is also very well-known for, you know, great community events that bring people here, including the residents that already live here and those from out of town. There's always that opportunity for scope creep a little bit and potential burnout. It takes a lot of effort and time and resources to put on those events, so it's just important to kind of have the framework around, you know, what's the ROI? And that doesn't have to be fiscal, it can be intangibles as well, but just sort of know how to, that decision-making lens of the right balance of special events that maintain the community kind of culture you want, but are also feasible for staff moving forward. And with that, we'll just quickly kind of talk through, this is a view of kind of the full citywide organizational chart as we would propose it with sort of two core portfolios, along with public safety with the addition of the city manager. Any blue box represents some recommended additional staff as part of the report, and then this second table shows the details around the position recommendations and our preliminary kind of phase priority, how we would think about funding or implementing these position changes over time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's see if the council has questions. Councilor Merleau.
Sure. Well, first of all, just thank you so much. This was an excellent report. I'm really impressed by the breadth of what you did and the depth of your research and then really distilling it down, so great job. Some of my questions, I think I have the answers to, but I'm just going to ask them for purposes of the discussion, is with regard to, so the position of assistant city manager and then, and then looking at Public Works, I was wondering if, and I appreciate that you did the evaluation of neighboring cities and things like that. And I don't know if any, if any of your analysis in the backend had looked at the scale of a capital delivery program. That's another item on our agenda tonight, but just sort of looking ahead to that. Do you do any evaluations of that to also kind of look at the focus for the, like the public works director level?
Did you ask that, like, did we as part of the study?
Yes.
I would say we did a cursory understanding of the scope of your capital improvement plan, but not an in-depth analysis on kind of what the future delivery looks like. We did see the really good sidewalk 10-year, this is everyone that we're going to do, which is phenomenal, so.
Yeah, yeah. I guess my question was in regard to the comparison with other cities, like, is there a, my question might be, is there sort of a metric when you look at capital programs and then you look at the needs for leadership of Public Works?
I would say the short answer is no. We have kind of love-hate relationship with benchmarking, if I'm being honest. It's, it's a data point. It helps ground us in kind of where we may move, but we are diligent to not put too much weight, and especially in a capital setting where it's a little bit more volatile, right? Like on a five- or 10-year horizon, some cities might just be immersed in capital and others may be in a maintenance mode, and then you look three years later and it looks completely different, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McGethry.
You know, I think I'll start with something right, right at the very beginning, and you get the exact quote here. City Council has set ambitious goals that build on your organization's strengths through continued infrastructure and investment. I wonder if you'd be a little more specific about what the ambitious goals are that the council has set?
Sure. I'm going to pull up that part of the report, too, so I'm not.
It's right in the executive summary.
Yes.
The first sentence.
I think we have your goals. Yeah, I think, you know, maybe ambitious was in hindsight, we could use a different word, but what I think that came from was our understanding of your pavement management plan, like, as we understood Measure E24 and the, and the kind of desire to both maintain the infrastructure you have and then upgrade and replace what is needed, which we're seeing a lot with, with the local governments that we're working with currently. It feels ambitious, right? Because it's not just, do we have the funding over five to 10 years to support, you know, the cost of these infrastructure improvements, but do we have the staffing and resources to actually deliver? And I think in a capital mindset, it's nuanced and it's a little more complicated because you're going to contract out some of those large projects, and you're going to also manage in-house with your engineers and your staff some of your ongoing kind of maintenance and repair needs. And so I think just kind of the infrastructure needs, not that they're ambitious and you're building some massive new, you know, facility or community center, but just the ability to manage that both from a financial perspective as well as a delivery perspective, you know, takes a lot of organizational capacity.
And that's basically the basis of your, that we have ambitious priorities is the infrastructure program?
Yes, but to us, you know, that's where a lot of the energy from a strategic perspective is, is around infrastructure and community feedback seems to support that as well.
Okay. And you noted that we have a new city manager's been here, but you're in a quarter, something like that. We've also had a lot of other turnover as well, and I'm wondering if, and I'm thinking specifically of your spaghetti chart that you have, how much of that is current and how much of that is either took place when we were dealing with, I mean, I think we were on our third HR director in two years, and how much of that is current and how much of that is in a small operation when one department's vacant, other people are stepping in and filling out? So how much of that is current and what I'll call residual from, from that period?
Um, that's a hard one to like get into the numbers on. Any organization's going to have churn, and that inevitably impacts kind of workload drivers. I would say what stood out to us from an administrative perspective is your overall like historical trend line with staffing. So staffing has been essentially flat, right? If you adjust for the Recreation Services programming changes, and so it has remained flat while kind of the administrative responsibilities, particularly from a compliance side, so some of the things that Rebecca was alluding to, like within your internal service functions, just your labor, labor relations and negotiations and state laws and all the things that you have to keep up with as an organization have not remained flat. I would say, you know, those types of needs have continued to grow, and so as the staffing has remained consistent, they're both trying to absorb and take on the new requirements or whatever kind of the service level expectation is, while also still wearing all the different hats to get, you know, what used to be the case still done as well. So I think it's more of the growing demand around service level expectations, and in an administrative setting, a lot of times that's more of a compliance or a kind of a mandate-type environment, the unfunded mandates that often come down to local governments alongside, you know, really little to no staff growth, and so it's just getting absorbed. And the only way it gets absorbed is everybody does a little bit of everything, and that's kind of what we saw in that diagram.
Okay. That kind of feeds into my next question, which is, because we hear this a lot, you know, we all hate the state, but only because it rhymes. But we, I wonder if you'd be a little more specific about the kinds of requirements that are required, that weren't required? I'll show you, I'm back on council after having been off for six years, so, you know, things don't look that different to me. So I realize there's the iceberg, and I understand, but I wonder if you guys would be a little more specific about particularly in accounting for us this week?
I'm going to pass it to my California friend here.
Watch her wind up, did you see that?
Yeah.
I'll do my best. You know, there's a lot, in particular, finance, that's my background, so I know more there. But, you know, there's, there's been just simple stuff like the COVID-19 funding issues, there's tracking for all of that stuff to get that money, and grant management. There is, the state, I can vouch, almost every year has some new requirement, a report that has to be done. There is, I'm trying to think of, I just had one and now I lost it. There's a lot of financial stuff in particular that your measure, your new measure, needs tracking. Every, every, you know, special revenue has to have a new fund and track, and so that's work. For IT, I think it's just the demand for faster, quicker service, you know, a lot of it's expectations. So is it absolutely necessary, like in the means of IT expectations? No, you can make people wait. It's really a choice, right? So that's part of the issue. And we were looking at expectations, but also where we think you need to go in terms of IT, for example, that we think you will benefit overall by investing in that efficiency upfront, and then later on it will pay dividends in terms of, you know, faster service and better service to your customers, that kind of thing.
I did think of a couple more as she was thinking about that. Within the human resources side, a little bit compliance, but also if you just think about what happened in the labor market over the last, you know, three to five years, I think, you know, a part-time position that you've recently authorized for hire what was historically just one officer, I think you have multiple MOUs and contracts in place, the churn and the turnover, you know, kind of ebbs and flows, but it was certainly at kind of a peak during COVID and as organizations are working through retirements and succession planning. And so that's another area where, you know, I think the administrative support we saw was just sort of flooding in from multiple angles to help HR because, you know, their world was sort of really busy over the last few years, so I think that's, that's an area as well. And then to Rebecca's point, customer service, you know, you just, you want to offer kind of that high-touch feel, you can come in and say, hey, I submitted this permit, what's going on with it? You know, someone there to answer your question or answer the phone, and, you know, I think that the community expects that with the city, but those things, you know, have to sort of be passed, and in a part-time setting, it gets even more nuanced with who's covering what, when, and who's in what days and other days. and who's in what days and other days and that sort of thing, so.
So, I wonder if you would go into the difference in role for our policy analyst and what an Assistant City Manager, what the difference in support to the City Manager they would get that's different than we could be using a policy analyst?
Primarily managerial responsibilities. I mean, that was the very obvious difference, I think, in our recommendation, because you have kind of a joint title position currently, but in practice, there's no additional supervisory responsibilities outside of Public Works. And so, I think the primary difference is going to be in splitting the functional oversight of your departments between two folks and then creating capacity within those two folks for the strategic aspects of what you want them to kind of guide the city through based on your goals and priorities. So, I think that's the main driver. Our view of the analyst role was really one that kind of connects the policy and kind of fiscal analysis work that Administrative Services is doing or that Human Resources may be doing from a kind of labor or people perspective with kind of what's going on with the community and what's going on with council, or what new legislative action may be occurring that could have an impact on us. And so, that's how we viewed one as designed to be truly analytical in nature, help kind of do that analysis objectively to guide decision-making in a policy setting where the other is very much an executive leadership managerial responsibility for, you know, roughly half of the city departments.
Basically, when you're talking about the extended span and control for the City Manager, you're talking specifically about the department heads?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then in my sort of review of some other cities, I see a lot of Assistant City Manager, but I don't see a lot of Policy Analyst, at least not in the smaller cities. So, is that typical in your review?
It's going to be hard for me not to be biased here, because I started my career in local government as a Budget and Policy Analyst, so.
How big a city?
A little bigger, a little bigger, City of Norfolk, Virginia. But I, I think we typically do see a Management Analyst role. Now, where that role fits in a particular department, usually within internal services, can vary, but there's certainly, especially in today's world, a need for like that analytical decision-making ability, you know, someone who can take and discern the facts, do the research, and kind of help guide the decision-making process as policy decisions continue to ebb and flow. So, yes, we didn't specifically look at, you know, whether there were analyst-type positions like we did for the ACM, but, you know, certainly in larger organizations and certainly in our work, we see that type of role as being a pretty important role somewhere within kind of your internal service and city management space.
How would you define large organization?
I walked right into that, didn't I? That's a good question. That's what I was thinking. Fifty thousand, I think, starts getting into more definitive, you know, like where we would maybe not see as much of the gray or the blurred lines that we saw here. Like, frankly, you know, this team is great, and it's because they have to be, they have to be able to work across functions and departments, or it wouldn't get done, right? They recognize that they're not a city of 50,000, they're, you know, 18-ish, right? And so, they, folks are willing to wear different hats. We see that a lot in an organization of your size.
Oh, yeah, this is my last. You mentioned ROI on special events. I just want to give an idea what that looks like. I mean, we talk about ROI in marketing, that's not easy. Wonder what it would look like for special events?
I would almost say you would have to tell us what it would, you know, but in some ways, it's, there's a fiscal component to it, there's the intangible component to it, it's just understanding really your sources and uses, right? How many events do we have going? What's our typical foot traffic? Do we have a sense of how that drives potential revenue? You know, people are eating at our restaurants or doing different economic activity when they're here, and you're offsetting that with, you know, how much staff time is spent on the weekends, and if you have public safety involved, there's typically, you know, maybe overtime or comp time or other things going on. So, what are the uses, you know, what are the uses needed to actually put on those special events? And not that it has to break even, but, you know, whether it's volume, like, should we just be doing this many? Should we have more, should we have less? Or just making sure that you're in alignment? And again, it doesn't have to be a net positive, I don't think. It's just more of kind of going through that exercise of, have we ever kind of penciled this out to sort of see if it makes sense, right, for us to expend all these resources for the benefit of said event? Yes, and right, what's your trade-off? What's your opportunity cost as a result?
Thank you for those answers.
Thank you. Councilmember Maravilla?
I don't have any questions, but I have comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Just one question, and I understand if you may not have this, but one of the items that you were looking at was the increase in the response to record requests. And I'm familiar, we have 10 days to comply with those. And those, I think I know most of this, but I just kind of want to bring it out, so I'm not trying to cross-examine you. But you, I think that you mentioned the requests have gone up 50% in the last few, five years. Okay. And those can be thousands of pages of records. Is that true? Okay. And I think that you also said those were being done manually.
The tracking is being done manually.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the tracking. So, staff is basically utilizing email and Excel spreadsheets to try to track and monitor the system.
So, if one of those requests comes in, it sounds like by its nature, it has to get priority because we're on the 10-day schedule with the court. Do you have any idea how many hours the city staff has had to spend in the last year or the last two years on records requests?
I do not, and I'm not sure they track that, but I would refer to your city clerk might know.
Right, I just...
Yeah. Apology.
I don't have that number for you right now. I could put that together, but I can say sometimes in a week, we're spending 30%, 40% of our time on public records requests or subpoenas in addition to the normal day-to-day.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Most of mine are comments, too, but I do have a question. In Table 20, your summary of recommended staffing increases, you don't necessarily have to go there, but in your report, it has the IT specialist as a TBD?
Yes.
Why was that the only one that was TBD?
Good question. Yes, so we know that your master plan is underway, and we know that the IT master plan, issued the request, you're kind of working through that process. We think whatever comes out of that process is going to give you really good guidance around what resourcing and capacity needs exist in IT. Our perspective broadly is you'll need more resources. Now, whether that's contractual or in-house, I think is more determinant of the result of the master plan. But overall, just the modernization efforts that you've already undertaken with Munis and that you may undertake in the future, it's just important to recognize the customer support need that your frontline departments will have for continuing to use those applications, right? So, that your Public Safety and your Community Development, all of these departments sort of have someone to go to to say like, ah, I can't get this to work, or why isn't this workflow? And so, it's TBD because we really think the master plan will give you better guidance around if that's a stronger contractual relationship or kind of where your services are contracted versus in-house. But we don't see a scenario where you wouldn't need more going for it.
That was super helpful. Thank you. That was my only question. All right. So, let's go ahead and open up public comment. So, ladies, it doesn't mean you're excused, though, because during council communications we might, or comments, we might have more questions as they come up. So, if you would like to speak on Item 11B, would you like to come forward now, please? All right, seeing no one here, we'll check in with the city clerk and see if anyone at home has questions or comments.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back around to us. I've not yet hit Mr. Guthrie, you're going first, so you mind going first tonight, Mr. Guthrie?
Set up there, okay. Well, first off, I do appreciate the report. I do think it is important that we, that we get an outside opinion, and because we certainly, as we look inside, we either just get used to doing what we're doing, don't look at the potential changes or potential ways of improving that just, that just don't come to you naturally, I'll say, when you're doing it. I think I'll just start with, with one thing, I'm glad to see that there isn't a recommended for some major organizational change, that's combined departments, split up departments, create new departments. In past years, in my past council period, we had multiple major reorganizations, mostly because we got something wrong in the previous version. So, I'm glad to see that these are recommended adjustments. I think my primary comment is that we have gone to a major period of, I'll call it change, but, you know, positions turning over, we have a new City Manager, we have a new HR Director, we have a relatively new City Engineer, and I'm going to say, my feeling is things just haven't settled out yet. I realize that the reason I asked about the high expectations, in many ways, I honestly believe what we're asking for is pretty standard. We're, you know, it's not like we're, when the general plan comes back, doubling the population, then, yeah, we have some issues. But so, I'm going to say that that's primarily where I'm coming from. I would really rather see things settle out. I don't, I don't see the missing pieces yet in that, when I look at, we actually did put together a tremendous plan for, with current staff, and I notice there's hardly any changes recommended in the Infrastructure Department. They're almost all recommended on what I'll call the Chief's Department of where we're working. I know you weren't, of where we're looking, I know you were not looking at any of the...
What do you mean by chiefs? I want to understand you.
Assistant City Manager, Economic Development Director, whatever they would recommend there. Yeah, those are the, and then their assistants. Now, I realize that's partly because you didn't look at police and you didn't look at Public Works. I have to admit, I missed that my first time through the, through this. So, that's my sense here. As far as adding positions, one, I really want to see our organization settle out a little bit and determine what, sort of what we really need when people have, that we review, do we really need that spaghetti? Or is it just in place because we're doing what we did a year and a half ago or six months ago, and in reality, we could, we could better define what those positions are? I know it wasn't your job purpose to put together a really specific job description, but I, I just am not comfortable with what an Economic Development Director would do other than what our Recreation Supervisor or Director does now. So, and I'm not totally sure what an Assistant Manager is, that's why I asked the question about the analyst. We have a part-time Assistant Manager, and I'll admit, he's probably busy focused on infrastructure. And we have an analyst, and I, I would want to see us work through that before we just start adding positions, because once you added positions, they never go away. And typically, in my experience, as soon as you add a chief position, you need assistance to support them. So, my inclination here on adding positions, at this time, I'm not in favor of adding positions, and I also have to say that we're sending the wrong message to the public. We just passed E24 based on that we were going to focus on infrastructure, and here we are immediately turning around and hiring two relatively high-end positions. And I just think that sends the wrong message. I don't know that it'll really, I don't think it'll impact negatively our ability to deliver on that infrastructure, but it certainly sends the wrong message. So, those are my comments. Like I said, I'm not in favor of any new positions at this point, and I think we really do have to lean back against that. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to jump around, just because other people, trying to keep everybody on their toes. Councilmember Maravilla, you ready to go?
I am.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am actually in complete opposite point of view as Mr. Guthrie. I think that, as the consultants have said, we're moving into a very ambitious plan for pavement improvement especially, and I worry about the management of it if time is being split in so many ways, and I worry about burnout of staff at a higher level if we're consistently continuing to add to workload without giving more resources. I understand the public perception of things, but I don't think we can continue to add on projects to our staff without adequately staffing our staff. I worry that that would, potential turnover is always, you know, on my mind, and that actually is going to cost us more in the long run, in my point of view. I would like to see us move forward with splitting the Assistant City Manager and Public Works into positions at this point in time. The Economic Development position, I, I understand it. I don't know if it's a good time to delve into that right now. I think things are very interesting right now. I don't know a better word for that. I think that things are in constant flux right now. I'm not sure if that's going to be the best position for this particular point in time, but in the future, I do see, if we want to meet our goals of economic development that we've put as a priority, I'm not sure how we could achieve that otherwise. But yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty much my comments on this particular part of the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you. I, I would like to also echo that, you know, some of the key points that I heard were, of course, looking at our four focus areas, infrastructure delivery, economic development and vitality, organizational effectiveness and quality of life. And the consultants also pointed out that things that we have going for us here are the high level of customer service that people enjoy, that they've come to enjoy, the stability of leadership, which we now have over the past year, which maybe we haven't enjoyed as much of, and then opportunities for succession planning and investment in technology. All of those things are happening, those have been identified as good things. And I think there's, what I see that the consultants brought to us is a lot of good insight on best practices. And I am, I am also very, I guess, sensitive to the fact that we are on the cusp of this demand that we've created or that the public has now for us to deliver on Measure E24. And I think it's very easy to separate the capital investments from the operational investment, what it takes to deliver. You can have the capacity to deliver, which I have a high degree of confidence in the staff and the commitment, and I think that's come through over and over again, and I see it myself. It's impressive. But I think we're on the edge of, of kind of getting beyond the, what do you call it? You go, when things kind of reverse. So, you can do, you can work so hard to a certain point, and then it's diminishing returns, I guess is the term. And I feel like adding Measure E24 to our plate, we're at that point where we could start seeing diminishing returns because we're just putting too much on people. And, and when I, when I look at the whole picture, and I think quality of life, I think about the quality of life for our staff. And so, we talk about how fortunate we are to have City Manager Downing here. I don't know if he would say if we looked at that iceberg, the 90-10, you know, that's maybe pretty typical, maybe some days it's more like 98 and 2, or, I'm not sure. But I know that, I know that, you know, the representation of span of control and how much, how much energy it takes to kind of keep everything going. To me, to me, that's the top priority here, is to alleviate the pressure and the demands on our top leaders so that they can focus on these strategic, important initiatives that we're setting everyone forward on to do. I don't like having a $20 million capital, you know, capital improvement program for this coming fiscal year and still expecting the Public Works Director to also be the Assistant City Manager. I know he does a great job wearing two halves. uh wearing two hats, but I think when we're on the cusp of setting forward new expectations in light of all of the additional demands um uh that people are placing on us, there's um our our clerk indicated thirty to forty percent on the um Public Records Act request, that people people um maybe over time have become more demanding. Are there more people? Maybe the population has been stable, but uh the there's been a growing intensity on the demand for the staff, and I feel um I feel strongly about this. I feel that um very much the economic development position, I I love it. I think that's consistent with the new new initiative. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't add that to the plate of our um managers to embark on yet another new initiative without giving them additional resources. So I feel very strongly about um uh taking on that recommendation for uh the assistant city manager, because I think it's it's um putting our priorities in two places. One is with leadership, stable leadership at the facility uh with the city, um being able to to focus on these strategic objectives, and then also um freeing up and allowing the public works director to uh focus and make sure that the the delivery happens and that the public work staff are supported in the in the way they need to be supported. So to me, I I think that the the report and the presentation uh has has laid this out perfectly, and um um I I feel like that's really important, and that's not to take away from the rest of the recommendations. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because I just basically agree with it. But I would absolutely want to see um uh an advancing of the assistant city manager position. Thank you.
Mayor Pretto. Do you like me to go first?
No. Thank you. This is going to take a while. Uh, I appreciate everyone's patience. I appreciate all the incredible work staff has done and the consultants have done. This is obviously a huge uh project and a huge deal, and I know it's important to all of us. Um, it it's too serious for me to say it's it's almost comical, but we all have, I think we all have a different take on this. I know we're all concerned. So in no particular order, I feel very, very strongly about not overloading staff and that only goes so far. And I think we have an incredible staff, and I've only been here like two and a half years. But when I walked in the door the first day, I was like, wow, they're super competent, they're super nice. Um, and and we'd like to keep them. I uh and all I can say is bad things happen when folks have to do other other folks' jobs. And um so I'm not, I will just respectfully disagree uh with folks that think um there's no need for extra staff, because when admin and financial folks are stopping to deal with the public, and we love the public, but they can, you know, they can take up a lot of resources and time, and you're answering the phone and your ants, you know, ants dealing with the front counter. I can't imagine to then be trying to work on the budget or whatever your actual job description is. And I know we all have opinions based on our life experience. My life experience is that things go very badly eventually at some point. Um, when people are are just asked to do other folks' jobs, it creates burnout, and before that, it creates a really low morale. Um, so and I also uh am aware of the economic non-human part of it, which is, it also is just ridiculous or difficult to have to then recruit and rehire. You already have a great person, let's keep them, is my feeling. So and I think in the report, there's a quote, it's impressive that staff continue to deliver their high-quality services to the community. And in my opinion, for sure it is. So I I'm going on what the what the staff report was in terms of, I would recommend receive and file. I think they have all spent a long time, and city manager himself has spent a long time looking at this. And they are recommend, I believe, if I understand correctly, their city manager is recommending starting with the economic development um coordinator. And um I understand other people, other people's comments, it certainly makes sense. But this is a major goal of ours, and we have to start somewhere. So i- if we don't take that step, we're, it just seems like we're never going to get there. And I know there's questions about the national economy, things like that. It seems like no matter what happens, that's that's the direction we want to go in. I mean, we did say it was our goal. Um, and it seems like it would be very valuable to have someone who could be out in the community contacting folks in a friendly way that have an open storefront or an open lot. Can we hook them up with someone that is trying to start a business? Look what Grover Beach has been able to do, saying, um, so. And then the other important thing about the city manager position is my understanding was that's still being recommended, but just not until the fifth next fiscal year, which is we're half, you know, we're about halfway through, right? So I would feel differently if that was not on the table, but that's my understanding of that. Um, let's see. And I I don't agree that this is just a settling out, and people are doing the jobs of others. It seems to me it's a slippery slope, so. Um, and there's a comment about, do we have that much spaghetti? It seems to me we do, people doing all sorts of things. Let's see. Hold on. There's things in the report uh or there's the city report that I don't know if if you're looking for direction on. I mean, I have things like it's it seems reasonable to formalize reducing the plan, planning manager's sphere of control. Seems reasonable to work on re-titling the executive secretary, human resources, um and moderizing the efforts to reduce paper, et cetera. I love collecting review fees at the beginning. I guess I'm surprised that that maybe wasn't already procedure, but I'm sure you have people that stop somewhere in the process and don't continue uh with their plans, but the staff has already spent a bunch of time working on it. So that that seems like a good thing. I know this is going on, I apologize. Let's see. So ju- just back on the creating the economic development coordinator um to support economic development program, it would move the a major council goal forward.
Don't go rush. Get to say what you want to say.
I love um any help for the public records request. That that has, I mean, just what we've witnessed. I think anyone uh can file one of those, and they often involve thousands of pages of record. And and people have a total right to file them, but the reality is that's really expect that it's the cost has to come from somewhere. That's alarming to sound to hear people can be spending thirty hours a week on them when they have other jobs. So that's, um, it just sucks up obviously a lot of um staff time and cost, and it would be great to make it as efficient as possible. Um, the restructuring engineering resources to align with our council infrastructure goals, I love that. That makes a lot of sense. I understand it's difficult to hire experienced engineers, and you could quote grow them in-house. So then they would develop expertise really that would fit um the city. That seems great, uh training up new engineers in that way. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, um. I was prepared to address the alternatives in the staff report, which differ than the recommend from the recommendation that's on the board. Because in the staff report, it says receive and file and direct staff to incorporate priority recommendations, one, three, four, five, six, nine, eleven, twelve, sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. So I'm on page ten of the staff report, page three ninety of five oh four in total. So that's what I'm prepared to discuss right now. That's what I thought we were going to be discussing. So I'm going to run through these because some of the council has touched on some of these, but this is what the staff report told me to look at. So let me go back to the chart that's in there. So we may, we may need to give direction in a in a kind of Frankenstein sort of sense. Yeah, that'll that'll do. Thank you. Um, so for number one, I am not ready to do that in this budget cycle, and I'm not ready to to put that money out there. It's, I'm not quite as adamant as Councilmember Guthrie, but I do think we've got a public perception problem if we um follow the recommendations just uh from the chart that was included in the consultant's report. Those are all good and important, maybe medium and long-term things, but those add up to half our pavement budget that existed before measure E. And when you put it like that, that's that's hard. That's hard for me to swallow. So I can't do number one on this budget cycle. Number three is fine. I'm, I don't have any problem with that. Number four, I'm I'm not ready yet. I need more. I need a scope. I need a job description, and I need to know what that person is really going to do, and then I'll be ready to say yes to that. I think it's something that we may need. However, we did have conversations before with the chamber about doing um some of this. So there may be ways to partner or partner with other cities who also have an economic development coordinator that might be shared, because some of these things can be regional. I'm totally willing to look at number four. I just don't know that it looks for sure like a one-point-oh FTE. Um, number five, I'm fine with. Number six, I'm fine with. Number nine, I'm going to tell you, I mean, because I'm, my other half is an architect. Three city managers ago, I brought this up, and I thought this had already been done. So I was shocked to see that in this report. Because literally my husband was in rep uh doing something, and he said, you won't believe this, but your staff doesn't do this. I said, wait, what? And I went to the city manager, and they said, wait, what? That's dumb. And but I guess it never got done. So hallelujah. Thank you, ladies. Number eleven. I'm I'm okay with that one. Uh, that's fine if it's a retitle, but I think it is going to come with some extra duties because it says it comes with a uh full-time. In the longer text of it in here, it says increase the part-time executive secretary position in HR to full-time and retitle the human resources specialist. So that can't have a no fiscal implication. So I I see y'all have crossed things, but I'm reading the staff report verbatim. So what am I missing here?
So what uh I I think where there's some confusion, and we we had talked about this uh ahead of time in developing the staff report, is there's the consultants' independent recommendations that they've made. We, as your staff, your professional staff, have looked at their recommendations and gone, okay, how do we believe that we can implement this recommendation? Our recommendation is purely to do the re-titling part and not do the additional
Okay. So then I'm just fine with that for number eleven. Number, uh, can you go to the next? Thank you. Number twelve, I'm fine with. This is obvious. We don't need another human to do this. We need AI to do this. So um, yes, in whatever capacity that is, and if that costs us software or twelve thousand dollars, that is money well spent. Uh, number sixteen, I am fine with, obviously, especially since it saves us money, but um I that's, that sounds great. Number eighteen, I am it it kind of goes with number four. And so I want to see how these things dovetail. I want to see what the plan is for doing this. I don't want to just say, ooh, we have an economic development program, but we don't have any identified goals or responsibilities there. And I'm not understanding how the T bid. I I understand that from just previous conversations that that would be half-paid by the T bid, therefore they would take the T bid, but then also do economic development, but then that's why I need a scope on number four. So I'm I'm a little confused about four and eighteen and how those go together. And um nineteen, I'm okay with, but not if we're looking at what special events we're getting rid of, because I can tell you that if there's any special event we get rid of, we're going to be tarred and feathered in the middle of the street. So I am great with staff figuring out how best to administer and put on our special events. That's great. That probably needs some reorganizing. Um, but I definitely don't want to see that in with an eye to elimination, because I'm telling you, the second it does, this this room is packed and it yucky things happen. So um, that's the place where we have the best chance to interface with people. And when I say we, I don't even just mean the council, I mean the staff themselves. And that's where the community really sees what our staff does, and even more importantly, who our staff is. And our is, and you know, just a few, a couple harvest festivals ago, when our police department all wore jeans and cowboy hats and gave out the cowboy hats and and you know, yes, there's a cost to that, but those are the things that make people love their city and invest in their city, and that and that has dividends. So I don't want to see any of that going anywhere. So I don't know if you got any clear direction on any of those, because we really kind of centered around whether or not we're going to add staff. That was where a lot of the council members went.
If I can jump in, yeah, I did focus exclusively on the on the new positions, because I did really didn't have any any problems with the other ones, although nineteen and four are obviously tied together. I I will say I'm struck by that we're actually in in one sense, reducing our engineering staff. I I understand, yeah, we we at least think that we're going to grow engineers, but you the timing just never quite works out. It's my experience that, you know, some other opportunity comes first, but um, so if 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 it were, if we if we had a proposal here to add an engineer, actually probably would be, we we we'd have a hard time saying no to that. So I'm I'm having, I'm having trouble with the with with the two positions as as uh but no, no problems with the rest of uh of the proposal. I do have one quick question. So the funding of the assistant manager or the additional funding for the Rita, the economic development uh coordinator, would were were you, are you going to be able to, I don't know the answer to this, but would you be able to fund us out of the current general plan, or would you be looking to take the the money? I'm sorry, general, general fund, or would you be looking to take the money out of the two thousand and six half-cent tax initiative?
So you're leading into the next item on your agenda where we're proposing how to balance your general fund, because we have general fund, measure O and measure E now. And what we are proposing, what you'll see in there, is actually moving uh some of the costs associated with Five Cities Fire and our police department into measure O, because that was partly established to uh address public safety um in order to accommodate some of the other service level requests, position requests, all the other things that we either want to do or need to do uh moving into the the next fiscal year. So um we would be funding these positions out of the general fund, but
But creating space by moving general fund costs into the O six.
Public, public safety, specific costs, yes.
Public safety. But public safety that's currently paid by the general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Even though they're both general fund.
Right. And at the end of the day, they're both general fund. However, we do keep the, for public transparency purposes, we do keep the accounting very separate. Um, but you'll hear more about
Just like we do for E twenty-four. Correct. Very exact same. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I um this is a receive and file, is that correct? And then we're providing some direction for the next level of the budget discussions. So I would, um, I don't know if you're ready for a motion, but I would like to accept. Can I? Oh, uh, I I would like us to res- to to receive and file the report. Uh, and I would like for all of the recommendations to be advanced into the discussion for the the budget discussions. And I would like to, I would like there to be some consideration for variations on some of these key positions. I know, I know this is I know this is not a unanimous opinion. There's going to, we're, we have, we're in different places here, but on on number one, and what we said the impacts are to public works, I'd like to see some variations that we could still consider in the budget process dealing with recommendation number one um and number four, if we were to flip-flop those from different fiscal years and that kind of thing. That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see this move forward with some of that variation applied in the next step.
I need to understand that a little more fully, because you're making a motion.
Should I go ahead and make a motion?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were making a motion. Forgive me. Okay.
I'm, I was confused. So I I'll move that we receive and file the report uh and that we accept the staff's recommendations to advance uh the recommendations one through the as they were listed with additional variation allowed in the next phase to move to to consider advancing and delaying among um adding positions such as number one and number four.
Are you talking about different options essentially?
In the in the budgetary process.
So like, you're wanting to see like two different options essentially, or am I reading this wrong?
Yes, I want to carry the recommendations. Yes, I wanna carry the recommendations forward. But I want, I'm interested in advancing the assistant city manager position. And so the
You mean making it happen sooner?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. And yes. And so to offset that would be a variation on from this recommendation is to delay the implementation of the economic development coordinator to make up for that. So those kinds of variations is what I would like to see.
Hold on a minute. Um, first of all, let's see if there's a second.
I will second that motion.
Okay, uh, under discussion. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I'm just a little bit confused. Um, and so my question is, and I think it would go to City Manager Downing. So we're today, we're, there's a motion to uh receive the report and recommendations. What is the next step in this process? Because I'm, I have to say I'm now confused.
Sure. So uh, let me take a step back and look at the, the recommend, the primary recommendation in front of you is to receive and file the report. Because we are in the process of budget development, we were trying to kill two birds with one stone, if you will, and try to get some direction on if you wanna implement some of these recommendations immediately, give us that direction. That way we can work that into our, our, our budget. Um, we, some, some of the recommendations, uh, as I discussed with you in preparation for the meeting, some of the recommendations are uh, don't need any council support, any council direction, any council action. It's just administrative things like collecting the plane review fees at the time of application, something we should have done years ago. Um, and so that's something that we will be just doing. Uh, other things like uh, uh, they, they other recommendations may need some budget adjustments. So like the um, the funding for the public records request, uh, public records act requests, um, software, thank you. Uh, that would come as a service level request through the budget. But the big thing I think uh that's obvious with the council is the positions. Um, so I think at the end of the day, if there's not, if there is consensus or if there's not consensus, uh, receive and file the, the, the report, uh, we can continue to move these things forward. I would say based on our recommendation for you this evening, that would be the recommendation that we bring forward in your preliminary budget uh on the twenty-seventh and get your direction at that time. I believe the motion that uh Councilmember Lowe made was bring forward, moving up the assistant city manager to the beginning of the first year and whatever you adjust with the economic development coordinator position uh, were at least Councilmember Lowe and Councilmember Maravilla, based on the motion in the second, are interested in seeing that. That's what I believe I heard in terms of your direction.
Thank you. So then we would, we would look forward to seeing a, a budget and a variation.
So what we would likely do is show you our recommended budget and then options. Uh, I would wanna work, obviously, work on that with our finance director, our administrative services director, Nicole Valentine, to make sure that we're not what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna go through uh and create twenty different scenarios of how to fund all these different things because then table internally, we can get confused on table one A is actually referencing table twelve B. Um, and we wanna bring you something that is easy for the council and the public to read, understand, and digest and, and take a policy action on. So um, we would look at that and how to bring that forward. It might be a um, we would wanna look at that based on your direction.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion a second. Let's get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie? I heard you. Councilmember Guthrie is a no. Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
No. All right, that was super fun. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll move on to eleven C in just a few minutes. All right, we are back for item eleven C. This is our ten-year capital improvement program, measure E twenty-four, local sales tax fund expenditure program and measure O, O six, local sales tax fund expenditure program. And we will begin with City Manager Downing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, a quick introduction before I turn it over to uh Director Valentine. Um, we, we're doing some things differently that she'll walk you through. Um, this is the first time that we are proposing a ten-year C I P. Uh, we typically do five-year C I Ps um in, in looking at this as an opportunity to start forecasting out what our needs are over the next ten years. Um, it's by no means perfect um in terms of all the things, we, we probably missed something along the way that we went that we might have to change when we bring this back next year and the year after that and the year after that. This is a living document. Um, it's an evolving document and, and that's, that's my point there. Um, as I mentioned on the last item, a lot of these, uh, a lot of these items that we're bringing to you are all building on each other. Um, so uh, the, the item that was in front of you back in uh, on April twenty-second regarding our uh, uh, street pavement program and calendar and all of that builds into this, um, which then builds into the preliminary budget that you'll see on uh, May twenty-seventh. And before we kick it off, I do wanna tip my hat to Director Valentine. I know for a fact that she has worked uh, really, really hard trying to switch from a five-year to a ten-year. I know for a fact that she's been up till midnight on five different nights uh, and worked three different weekends in order to uh, get this to you. So um, my hat is off to her, jazz hands. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Valentine.
Thank you, City Manager Downing. And I mean, there's been a, a huge amount of staff effort on this. So I appreciate the appreciation though. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Nicole Valentine, the Administrative Services Director, and I will be presenting the ten-years capital improvement program budget to you. Historically, the city has adopted a rolling five-year C I P that identifies, prioritizes, and budgets for capital infrastructure needs such as roads, water and sewer systems, parks and facilities. While this approach has served the organization well, growing infrastructure demands and increasingly complex funding environments have highlighted the need for a longer planning horizon. This report has transitioned the C I P from a five-year framework to a ten-year planning horizon, a change intended to improve long-range financial planning, infrastructure forecasting, and alignment with strategic goals. The rationale to the ten-year transition includes improved long-term planning, better alignment with ma- master plans and strategic goals, enhanced grant readiness, and fiscal sustainability. A diverse team of city staff have worked to create this planning document. Um, we've had, has all attended a series of collaborative meetings to discuss the requested capital improvement projects in consideration with many factors, including safety, community benefit, funding sources, the funding schedule, cap- staff capacity, the urgency of the project, and the number of projects each department has. The C I P uses all of these factors to evaluate proposed projects. Many projects in the C I P take more than one fiscal year to complete and each year, uh, and as each year progresses, um, we continue to make completion of different projects. The following C I Ps listed on the screen have been completed or anticipated to be completed during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The C I P outlines anticipated city infrastructure improvements for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six through fiscal years thirty-four, thirty-five totaling one hundred thirty-eight million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand and sixty-five dollars. The C I P serves as a pu- serves as a public information document to advise residents and property owners on how the city plans to address significant capital needs. It contains information about the scope, location, and funding of these projects. Every project in the plan has been considered for its financial feasibility, environmental impact, conformance to previously adopted plans, priorities established from this city council, and the ability to meet public needs. The C I P is divided into nine categories um that include bridges, drainage, parks and place structures, public facilities, sewer, sidewalks, streets and transportation, technology and water. The projects included in the ten-year budget totaling one hundred thirty-eight point one million dollars. Um, there, in the first fiscal year, there's twenty point seven million dollars and in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, there is twelve point eight million dollars. All of the funding sources may be used for various capital improvements and are reviewed at each year. Much of the work to develop the C I P focuses on balancing all of the available resources from the identified capital needs. There are limited sources of funding available for capital improvements. Some sources like development impact fees have restrictions on their uses within broad categories. Many projects have a large reliance on grant funding, debt financing, measure E twenty-four, and measure O, O six. The measure E twenty-four sales tax fund provides sixty-nine point nine million dollars for infrastructure improvement projects. And measure O, O six sales tax fund provides thirteen point eight million for infrastructure improvement projects. This very large table um shows the twenty-three funding sources over the ten-year timeframe um and how we get the one hundred thirty-eight point one million dollars. This is a table within the staff report and is far easier to read and review there. I have also provided a chart, which I believe helps illustrate this information uh a little easier to read for the public. Um, you will note that measure E twenty-four, our new sales tax, is providing fifty point six-two percent of the total funding for this ten-year planning scope. Major projects in the first two years of the C I P include the trafficway bridge. This is a multi-fiscal year project that has previously hit many milestones of design, environmental determination, and permitting in prior fiscal years with construction commencing next week and an expected can- completion date of December twenty twenty-five. The Halcyon Complete Streets Plan is a plan to develop an improved tran- transportation corridor on Halcyon Road that provides for safe mobility and accessibility for all users. Construction's anticipated in the first two years of the C I P. The pavement management plan was presented to your council on April twenty-second and has been incorporated into the ten-year C I P with a total budget of fifty-eight point three million dollars for maintaining the city's public streets, alleys, and parking lots. The Wasna Road Roundabout is one of the major circulation improvements identified in the circulation element on East Grand Street at Wasna Road and Corbett Canyon Road, adding a new roundabout to help improve the flow of traffic. The proposed ten-year C I P includes twenty-one point two million dollars for the continuation of re- replacing, rehabilitating, and maintaining the city, maintaining the city's water and sewer infrastructure. This includes rehabilitating deteriorating sewer maintenance holes, rehabilitating sewer mains through trenchless lining techniques, replacing, enlarging, and installing interconnect water mains. And there are three major master plan updates in the first two years of the fiscal year of the C I P, excuse me. The East Grand Avenue Economic Development Master Plan, the Stormwater Master Plan, and a master plan to review the Elm Street Park, Soto Sports Complex, Robert, Don Roberts Fields, and the Corporation Yard. Measure O, two thousand and six sales tax fund, as proposed and for the, the ten years is totals thirty-seven million dollars. This includes continued funding for public safety of approximately twenty-two point six million dollars. This is broken down between sixteen point five million for services from the Five Cities Fire Authority. This is a thirty-five percent total allocation. Five million dollars for two senior police officers and nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars towards Police Narcotics Task Force, Animal Service Building Debt Service, and an excavator um to provide hazardous fuels management and Meridian Vehicle Barricades for Public Events. And then the And then Measure O also includes $13.8 million for infrastructure improvement projects, $1.8 million for bridges, $2.6 million for drainage, $3.5 million for parks and place structures, $4.4 million for public facilities, $1.3 million for transportation projects, and $425,000 for technology. The remaining $325,000 is related to annual audits and sales tax reports. The funding for Measure E24 Sales Tax Fund, proposed in the 10-year plan, totals $70.3 million. That includes $52.2 million for the pavement management program. And the remaining $17.7 million for infrastructure improvement projects include the Mason Street Bridge totaling $3 million, sidewalk improvements totaling $5 million, Halcyon Road Complete Streets totaling $1.9 million, East Grand Streetscape Planning and Construction totaling $2 million, Branch Mill Road Slope Stabilization totaling $3.6 million, and connectivity of Coach Road from Wasna Road to Branch Mill Road totaling $2 million. This fund also has a remaining $325,000 for annual audits and sales tax reports. This is a pie chart demonstrates the breakdown over the 10-year planning cycle of the type of projects. So 69.9% of the projects funded are streets and transportation. 11.1% are water projects. 7.8% are bridge projects. The next steps for your council is that on May 20th, the Planning Commission will review and confirm the CIP. It conforms with the city's general plan. May 27th, we will present a preliminary budget to your council. And on June 10th, we will hold a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2527 biannual budget. Council action requested is to adopt a resolution approving the city's 10-year CIP for fiscal year 2526 through fiscal year 3035. Thank you. 3435, you're right. Thank you.
All done? Okay. All right, well, let's see if the council has questions. Councilwoman below, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Guthrie, any questions?
Am I on? Okay, because it's not... Okay. I guess I'm so used to looking at the deal for a light. Okay. So I really just... And I asked this question, but I just want to make sure. Wasna Road, the roundabout for Wasna Road, is that being funded by E24? Or are you planning to be able to completely fund that out of the mitigation funds? Work.
How's that? There we go. Way low. Okay. So the question was, how is the Wasna Roundabout being funded? And that's through development impact fees. And there's also a timing component to that project where we have it in our schedule to do the asphalt repairs at the same time. So we're getting those developer impact fees and doing the asphalt repair so we can kind of ball that up and have a really efficient and a cost-efficient project.
Okay, and then just a follow-up there. So is the roundabout already engineered and planned?
I don't think so, no. I mean, we've looked at a lot of roundabouts this year, the most we've ever looked at. And I would say we're still in the conceptual phase. We have a lot of room there. That's a really confusing intersection. We get a lot of complaints. We get the stop signs smashed down a lot. So we're in that conceptual phase, but we'll go through the design phase soon.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Marvilia.
The only question that I had was, I kind of, I just thought of it now. If we... One of our council goals that we talked about was water resiliency. So does that fit into this at all? Or can we even plan for anything at this point? I see like way far out there from the water fund. There's like millions and millions of dollars, but I'm just wondering.
So it's not directly part of the capital improvement program? It's a separate task because right now, we're not... We need to figure out how, what it looks like.
But I would assume there would be some capital improvements.
Eventually down the road. And that's why I let off the item, saying this is a living document. As we evolve, it will evolve as well.
Okay. So that could be a pretty significant part that we would have to add in the next... Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Procham?
Thank you, just quickly. Mr. Robinson, just questioning regarding the Wasna Roundabout. I think it's correct that funding has come through for crosswalks to better access Strother Park. And is there an economy of scale situation that could take place between that project and the Wasna Roundabout?
There could be, but the crosswalk design and the implementation of that project are similar, but it's mainly paint and signage and beacon lights. So we'll be doing the pavement in that area, but the crosswalk design is a little different, but the timing can be advantageous as well. So we'll see how those two mesh together.
Thank you.
I have a question about the community center rebuilding. I just didn't understand something here, and I didn't catch it until I was reviewing right before the meeting. So I'm sorry that I didn't ask this before the meeting. It says estimated timeframe for final design and construction documents is 2627. So that's really close with fundraising and construction. What does fundraising mean?
We need to identify another funding source for that project to bring it into fruition after the design. So it could be a grant. It could be fundraising from a community-type effort to, you know, put somebody's name on the building, something like that. There's... We don't know what the fundraising is, but we need additional funding to finish that project.
The only other thing I would add to that is we had looked at this when I first started in terms of how do we partner with somebody? Do we partner with Boys and Girls Club? Do we partner with YMCA? Do we partner with somebody in order to design the space for our needs, for their needs, for the community's needs, while they also kick in money to help build it? So that's the other piece of the fundraising that would be added to that.
So I'm confused by that because it says we're going to design it and do condos and then go look for partners. But wouldn't we want to look for partners before we did design and condos?
Yes, simple answers, yes.
Okay. So maybe that's just a little unintentional error? Or am I going to see like plans in the next fiscal year?
So one of the things that we've been looking at, too, is the overall master plan for that entire area. What are our courtyard needs? What are our sports complex needs? What are our Elm Street Park needs? Where does the building want to live? Does it want to live closer to Elm Street? Does it want to live closer to the corner? That way, it's more accessible. And if we don't have a building in the big space in the back, does that want to become pickleball courts? Does it want to become more tennis courts? So we do need to do some digging. We need to do some outreach to the community. As I've informed the council, we did enter into a contract with a company called Flashvote, where we can get them to basically do polling of the community for very cheap through text messaging to say, what do you want in a community center? So get some of that data-driven information to help us figure out where to go next. Because if the community says, you know, we're good on... They just need an office space? Great. And we don't need any community meeting space? Fantastic. But I anticipate we'll need some classroom storage and things like that, so.
And we're going to have condos like in hand in 2627 after doing all that? Or am I just focusing on something I shouldn't be focusing on here? I mean, just the order that it's in here is alarming to me. And I say this because there is history here where we were presented with a specific plan before the council gave direction. And that's when I'm seeing shades of that right here.
That will not happen.
Okay.
Because I am aware of that.
Okay.
What's not saying in there is what part of fiscal year 2627, which stretches from July 1, 2026, to June 30? I couldn't even do the math on that. June 30th, 2027. So it could be that we get to a point where, at the beginning of fiscal year 2627, we're bringing a concept to you for, hey, here's what the community is saying. Here's how we're recommending moving forward. Then we develop the construction documents from there. But yes, your concern will not happen.
That won't repeat? Okay, good. And we're going to know where money is coming from before we design? Okay, good. I know I sound like a dog with a bone, but it's all... I mean, that's what we do. This is all about the money. Then you guys do all that good stuff. And then on the O06, the O06... Can you put that slide up there for me? Mr. Downing, you and I talked about this before. I'm just throwing it out here because this isn't a direction at this point because it's going to come forward as far as budget. But I am absolutely for the hire of two senior police officers, but I don't want to see that out of O06. I want to see that out of general fund. I want to see O06 continue to be infrastructure and capital improvements as we've done in the past. And I feel like when we move that, move it in this way, I am concerned that it's going to give an illusion of a more healthy general fund than we actually have.
Certainly. So I completely understand the underlying concern. And based on our conversations in recent weeks, Director Valentine and I have looked at, if we don't put any additional funding into Measure O, what does that do to the general fund? Because as we're developing the preliminary budget, one of our goals was bringing you a budget where our general fund reserve met your council goal of 20% reserves. Now, obviously, that number fluctuates based on how much your expenditures are, et cetera. And so it's not a one-to-one conversion. That, from my perspective as your city manager, is what I was looking to do. It is completely a policy call for the council in terms of what you want to provide us direction on. Right now, we do, as I believe it's on the earlier slide, the city currently funds 25% of the FCFA costs through Measure O. And we already fund one senior police officer through Measure O. These are not new positions. These are existing positions. I just wanted to make that clear. So when Measure O was passed back in 2006, there were advisory measures on there as well in terms of if this passes, should we spend it on these things? Three of the four passed. Those are in your staff report. And so it's not completely out of the question to put this, use Measure O funds for these public safety features. But if it's the will of the council not to mess with the current 25% and one senior police officer, that's absolutely policy direction we will take from you and work on our preliminary budget before it comes to you on the 27th.
Is that... I'm confused about whether you need or want that direction officially tonight because we're supposed to really just be approving the 10-year plan. But I guess, does that include the detail of this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, that's it for my questions. Does anyone else have any follow-ups? All right, then let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anybody like to comment on item 11C? You have been waiting here all night so patiently. I'm so glad we're going to hear from you.
But he's going to... Can you hear me? Okay. So I supported the passing of Measure E24, and I'm grateful that the funding will be coming in to make improvements. I have a few questions, and it's interesting, the different comments I've heard on the last item. And right now, in two prongs. One, I know it's easy enough to set up a fund for your Measure E24 funds, but all the things that you're doing are still the things that the city would be doing anyway. And I'm interested to learn how I might know that the funds, the new funds are not just... You're removing funds from the general fund that you would cover anyway as you just discussed with the police officer positions. I'd like to know, are you still spending the funding that you would have on road maintenance out of prior funds? And then all of this is new funds for these projects? And then the second thing I'm interested in is you had a lot of outreach for getting community involvement and what we would like to see done with the funds. And looks, I'm very happy with where you're spending the majority of it. I live in the Tree Streets area, and boy, could we use some funding there? It sounds like city staff is setting up their plans. Will there be any community involvement for... Where we can advocate for our areas that, hey, my project is... As I learned last year, our street was like eight years down the road for some improvements while I watched Berry Gardens get nice coverage of their already nice roads. How can I advocate for my area to get improvements? Maybe earlier than you have put them in the plan? Will there be anything for residents to have an opportunity to say something? So, and I appreciate everything. It's all... I do think staff is great. Oh, and regarding the one concern, I can understand new positions to fund new positions for handling these projects. I guess I just wouldn't like to see outrageous pay raises in other areas of the cities. I know you don't want to burn out your staff. That's very important. So if you need staff to handle new projects as a resident, I understand that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's check in with the city clerk.
We have one hanging on still. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment. We do have two questions. So the first one is, how will the public know that the funds are being spent on new things and not things that we would have just spent money on otherwise and just moving things around?
So I'll start, and then I'll ask Director Valentine if she wants to add anything. I think on that one, that's part of what we're doing here tonight, is prioritizing how the existing Measure O funds, along with our general fund, how that's being spent. As through my conversations, I think one of the things that we had talked about was... Previously, we were putting about $1.2 to $1.5 million a year into pavement through Measure O. What we were telling the public is this really isn't enough. This isn't enough to move the needle on our PCI, and we need more. The community, through the passage of Measure E, said, yes, we agree with you. Here's what we're projecting to be about $6 million a year. That, for us, gave the opportunity to say, okay, we were paying 1.2, let's say 1.5 per year from Measure O. This is an opportunity to reevaluate what we're doing with that $1.5 million. And so staff took it upon themselves to make the recommendation of increasing, deprioritizing the 1.5 to streets and infrastructure and putting it toward other things. So essentially going, our street and infrastructure money is now Measure E, but we're going to pay for additional fires, the 35% rather than 25% out of Measure O for FCFA, fund the extra police officer cost, do other facility maintenance projects, things like that through Measure O. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
And can you just, for the public, can you... Just making sure they know the difference between O06 and E24?
Sure. So Measure O06 was a half-cent sales tax measure that was passed in 2006. Along... So it brings in about $3 million a year, and we spend that on a variety of different things. The 1.5 million in infrastructure, as well as 25% of FCFA costs and one senior police officer. So that has been in place since April 1st of 2007 because it passed in the 2006 election. Measure E24 was the full-cent sales tax measure that was passed in November of 2024, went into effect April 1st of this year, and we're waiting any day for that first check from the state on the Measure E24 sales tax money.
I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. And then the second question from the public was, how can they get involved and advocate for changes in the CIP? Or the... I'll let you fill that all out.
Yeah. So I think one of the primary... Yeah, so I think one of the, one of the primary ways to get involved is being here tonight, hearing from staff what we're proposing, moving things around. At the last meeting, when staff brought forward to the council, here's our plan for the next thirteen years to basically pave all of our city streets and, and the, and the reasons why and why we're doing what we're doing. I think one thing to stress, and the public can always reach out to our city engineer, Shannon Sweeney, she's fantastic. And she has gone through, and rather than saying, well, we're going to do this street because it's the lowest PCI, and then this street because it's the next lowest PCI, trying to get the most, we keep talking about economies of scale or bang for our buck, trying to group like improvements with like improvements. So it might be that a certain residential street needs a full dig out and full reconstruction, like what we did on Station Way earlier this year in preparation for the Trafficway Bridge Project, whereas other streets just need a crack seal and slurry and, and or minor dig outs and repaving. So we try and look at all of those different factors and really program that out to where we get the biggest bang for our buck and address them as much as we can each year by what the streets actually need. So we're planning on putting that list on, that, that schedule on our website, and people can go look at that. But I, I do recommend that they talk to our city engineer.
I'm going to push back on you a little bit there. Because they can't, you know, if they want to move something, they're going to have to come through the city council. So the timing is such that we do this usually every year in April, right? Where we look at the, the capital improvement plan, right? And so you, you just missed the one we just did, and that's probably what brought it to your attention, where you saw that big old chart and you looked for where your street was. So we do that once a year ahead of budget time. That's the time to come and, and kind of make some advocacy on your own behalf. But I'll also kind of translate a little bit, maybe, that maybe what you saw happening in Berry Gardens that made you feel like they're taking care of something newer than what you needed had to do with what kind of treatment was being done in a whole area, rather than what treatment you need might be completely different, and it probably is. So does that make some sense? Okay, so the answer was April.
See you next year.
Yeah, but you know where to find us, right? Okay, all right, so that's the end of public comment. Let this, bring this back around to the council, and then we've got this council action requested. So how about we go back to Councilmember Maravelia first this time? And then two, three?
I am in support of this capital improvement plan. I, I am a little worried about grant funding and how that's going to play out in the next couple of years especially, but we may need to make adjustments that, that happened because of that, but I feel pretty comfortable with where we're at right now. In terms of Measure O, I am okay with the staff's recommendations of, of moving up to the thirty-five percent for FCFA as well as the second police officer position, excuse me, my brain melted for a second. I think just looking at what the advisory measures were in two thousand and six that the voters approved, it's, it was, it passed, you know, staffing of public safety by, by sixty percent. So I think that's a pretty good majority that, you know, wanted us to spend that money in that particular way. And our needs now, twenty years later, are slightly different than they were. You know, when you look at the, the number one thing that we wanted to do or that people wanted us to do was the Brisco interchange in two thousand and six. And clearly, we're not doing that. So I, I don't have a problem personally adjusting those funds in that particular way. I don't know if there's any other comments that I need to make on anything, but come back to me if something comes up.
Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also, I'm in support of the recommendation, and I would just like to highlight a couple of things. I don't know if that, is that pie chart, figure one? Is that handy? Okay, there it is, okay. So that, the, the half there on the right there, that's Measure E. So this is the, this is the fund source for the whole tenure program, is that right? So fully half is, is Measure E. So over that ten years, that's, if we didn't have it, right, it'd be, we'd be looking at a different pie. But basically, this doubles what we can do in ten years, right? So I just want to highlight this illustration as how, how vital Measure E is to the capital improvement plan going forward. And, and again, how much I feel like the, the leadership over public works from the item, the other item we were talking about is so important to kind of allow the focus and the, and the delivery on that, because this is complicated stuff. I remember another, there was some other reference once to projects about, projects that would materialize or not. And it was kind of a detached kind of comment about projects that did or didn't materialize. And it takes a lot to deliver a project, just ask Shannon. And it's not well-understood by the, you know, by the average person. Projects happen, when they show up, they're complicated, they, people are, people are emotional about being disrupted and things like that, but these projects are very complex. And so I, I just want to underscore the need for our, our undying focus on supporting the staff who are delivering this program that's so important to us and the voters. And, and similar to Councilmember Maravelia, I'm also okay with the proposal under Measure O, because I think it, the, the language and the pattern, I think that the, the history and the flexibility exists, and so I'm, I'm fine with that proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Well, I know I'm spitting into the wind on, on oh six. I'll just tell you, I ran that campaign, and I don't think that anybody who voted for it, remember it only passed by thirteen votes, thought that we'd be looking at two-thirds of the funding being used for, for wages and salaries. Originally, in fact, if you, if you read it, it's far more about a police station and fire apparatus, and it only barely mentions, and the, the single enhancement that we sold that on was a battalion, one battalion chief for the fire department. That's what I'm saying, it's twenty, it is twenty years old. And it just infuriates me that we keep referring to it as if we're following it when we're not. If you guys want to change and just say, okay, it's twenty years old, things change, and things definitely changed, particularly in the fire department. We went from a volunteer fire department to a, not, not voluntarily, we went to a, a fully-staffed professional fire department over time. And so things have changed, so I, I recognize that. The original, there was actually no thought of any police officer being funded from there. It was actually the same year, it was the, we brought in, we converted two lieutenant positions to commander positions, and that was the difference in pay that it took. It wasn't, it wasn't a senior police officer. At some point, it got changed because the, the math was getting difficult to keep, to keep track of the change in, in pay for the commanders, as commanders make more money. So, so that was the original intent. So I'm on the other side of this. I think we want to protect that fund as much as possible, because it was, it, it is intended to be capital and to, just to maintain our twenty percent reserve, because I've seen this number in a, in a presentation. I'm actually in favor of sort of, as, as long as possible, maintaining that commitment to that being a capital fund. And so I, I wouldn't be in favor of the additional ten percent for the fire department or the additional senior officer being just moved out of the general fund, the other, the real general fund, and, and, and moved into this fund. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, sorry, got a little ahead of myself. First off, I, I do think this is a phenomenal report. We did just have a ten, a ten-year CIP, but it was, it was nowhere near as extensive as this is. And, and, you know, we've already seen the pavement plan, that same thing. I recognize the work involved, and I really appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you, no, it's fine. No, well, I would echo Councilmembers' responses, that it's a phenomenal report, and it's, it's great to see it. I, I think that I have read enough and been advised enough about Measure O. With the public safety component, I am comfortable with what is being proposed in terms of using the funds for the requested senior police officers and the added ten percent for the fire. We've, we've now got this ver- well, fairly large chunk, which is awesome, that is going to be coming in from E twenty-four. And everybody has agreed, yes, it's going for pavement. And, and that's, that's really important, but these other things need to be handled as well. So I'm comfortable moving forward on that. I'm glad to see the Wazna roundabout being discussed. That is a little bit of an obstacle course, and it's, when you add an extra direction coming at you, it's, it's challenging sometimes, especially for new drivers. And I just think that's going to make that area safer, and I, you know, as being District One, I also appreciate the plan to redo, is it, sorry, volleyball courts at Rancho Grande Park? I think those get a, a ton of use, and people will appreciate that, so thank you.
You are making me feel old.
I should be making you feel younger, I'm a cranky old man.
Nicole, thank you for your efforts, because this is a tight plan, and it's really well-done. And it's readable and understandable, and there's a lot of information here, and your efforts are not unnoticed. So thank you. In general, I'm in support of this, but I will die on this hill that, and, and I'm so glad that a member of the public stayed for the whole evening to put this in our heads, that we shouldn't be moving shelves around right after we do this. And, and if we've got one person sitting here, we've got lots of people who think this, and we turned a lot of people getting E twenty-four, making promises of what we were going to do. And we made promises in oh six, and I wasn't part of that group, but I was on planning commission at that time, and I was in city government at that time. And I am just absolutely loathe to have the very first thing we do start eroding oh six and then moving that somewhere else and moving staffing in there as a methodology for balancing the general fund. And if, if we're going to be depleting our general fund with, and our reserve balance as a result of this budget, then the public needs to see that. They need to see, the public is telling us, we see your need, we, we support your need, we want you to do this. But I don't want to move things around to make it look hunky-dory, because it's not. We, nothing's perfect, we're, it's, we don't have enough money to still do what we need to do. So I want, I don't, I can't support a plan that moves oh six around at the same time that we're approving a tenure CIP and telling everybody we're putting this all towards infrastructure. They don't understand the difference between oh six and E twenty-four. We understand that, but it's part of promises that I feel I've made over the years. I think Mr. Guthrie feels the same. And I'm, I'm just appealing to the rest of the council that people here have long memories, and I just think that we shouldn't be doing that. I think it needs to stay the way it is right now, and if we need to fund those positions out of general fund, then that's what we need to do. And if that moves the fund balance down, then we need to communicate that to the public. Because in the end, they're going to have to reauthorize E twenty-four, and all this goes away if they don't trust us. And this is, this is an issue of trust for me. So I am going to see, I am going to float a motion, and I'm going to see if it dies, and we'll see what happens. I'm going to float a motion that we approve the ten-year capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six through fiscal year thirty-four, thirty-five, and find that it's statutorily exempt from SEQA with the exception of the changes to fund oh six.
I'll second that.
You can, but the way the rules work is you got to wait for the second, now discussion, so go ahead.
And I know everyone on the council and everyone on staff, and everyone in the audience, has the best intentions, and we just have, you know, some different opinions. So I just want to say that I, I certainly don't think by, it seems reasonable to me, what my, what I was saying about Measure O. I certainly don't think, from my position, I'm not trying to put anything over on the public. I don't, I didn't see anything about this that would, should make the public question what my intentions are or what the intentions are of folks that are putting forth the idea of using O now for some senior police officers and from some additional Five Cities Fire authority funding. And, and my, so I just want to be really clear about that. I'm, I would never intentionally do something that I thought was, you know, sneaky or not intended or against the intent of, of what I understand O to be. I just thought it, it made sense, since we do have this chunk that we can now put towards pavement, which we all know is very important, I think we're on the same page with that. We need officers too, and it, it's just, so it just made sense to me. I didn't see it as a betraying of voters' trust. Thank you.
But we're going to get the officers either way. Okay. Discussion, yeah, your mic's on?
Sure. Yes, I would agree with Councilmember Seacrest on that. I, I believe that the flexibility exists with Measure O, and I appreciate the staff's ability to put a package together that is all upfront and talks about this flexibility. And I think I heard City Manager Downing talk about the fund reserve or the whether or not this is funded out of Measure A makes a difference later in terms of what percentage of the reserve that we can maintain in the budget. And the next question, right?
So what we referred to earlier was regards to the general fund reserves. So the council has a minimum policy of fifteen percent of operating expenses with a goal of twenty percent being held in reserves. I will point out that if we did the math leading into the meeting, if we do not make the FCFA and Police Department changes out of Measure O, it just so happens that through the preliminary budget, the CIPs, all of those things that we would bring forward to you would actually put that reserve down to fifteen percent on the dot. That was a happy accident, we didn't, we backed into that and didn't, didn't know it. So I, I just wanted to provide that for the council as a whole and for the public, that my goal as your city manager was to try and bring you a budget that hit the twenty percent goal. Fifteen is your minimum, and you can still do that if you don't make the Measure O changes.
Yeah. Thank you. So, so I'm, I'm okay with what it's proposed, but this is not a hill I'm going to die on. I, 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 you know, there's other leaders in the community who have a strong opinion on that, and I, I won't fight that either, so.
I'll have our hills. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Maravelia?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Seacrest?
No.
All right, that takes us to council communications. Anyone have communications this evening? All right, seeing, I do, actually, I have to grab my phone to look at my, my email, because I can't get to it without going through ten steps of authentication. And there is upcoming here on May seventeenth is the Five Cities Repair Cafe. And this one is going to be held at the Oceano CSD facility, so OCSD. And Linda Busek is an Arroyo Grande resident, and she's the one who runs this. And she says, you'll be pleased to know that most of the Repair Cafe attendees are residents of Arroyo Grande. They do keep statistics on this. So what they do is people come in and they offer to repair things, and you bring in your broken stuff, and they repair them, and it's a really nice way to repair, recycle, and reduce waste in the community. So again, that's May seventeenth at the OCSD. And the time is, man, I opened the Spanish one. I'm stand by. One o'clock to four thirty. So if you can make that, that's, and you got some lamp that needs to be fixed or whatever. There's been knife sharpening, there's been all kinds of stuff there, yes, by a former city manager, actually. Okay, so any other council communications? All right, then we, that takes us to item thirteen adjournment. We will see you in two weeks, everyone. All right. Then we, that takes us to item thirteen adjournment. We will see you in two weeks, everyone.